All right, we're going to call to order the March 20th meeting of the West Sacramento City Council Redevelopment Successor Agency and Financing Agency. We're going to begin tonight with the Pledge of Allegiance, and so I'd like to invite our guests to join the council and staff in the pledge, which tonight will be led by Ms. Amy Brown. The council and successor agency did meet in closed session this evening to consider three matters concerning -- three conferences with legal action: one on the Coalition for Appropriate Port Development versus the city, two, the city and successor agency versus the Department of Finance in Yolo County, and third, the Department of Finance Disallowance of City RDA Agreement Related to Tax Increment, and no action was taken on those items. Discussion only. All right, that brings us to item 1A, which is Presentations by the Public on Matters, not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the city council, and as noted on our agenda, we are prohibited from state law -- by state law from having a discussion or taking action on items that are brought up under item 1A, but it does represent an important opportunity for public forum. We do ask that anyone wishing to address the council on this or any other item this evening to please fill out one of the yellow cards that's available near the door and to turn it into the city clerk. In front of the city clerk is a timer that we use to make sure that everyone gets a chance to be heard, and to that end, we ask that all comments be limited in no more than three minutes. Also in front of the clerk is a flip chart, and the flip chart simply indicates which agenda item the council is currently considering. We take the yellow cards all the way up to the conclusion of the staff report on that item, so for example, if you're here and you wish to speak on item 12, the card -- we take the cards all the way up until the point that the staff has finished making their presentation on item 12. Once the council questions and the public testimony has begun, we don't take any additional cards, so if you know now that you want to speak later on an agenda item, the sooner you get the card in, the better, but you have all the way up until the conclusion of the staff report. We do recognize that for some folks, speaking in public can present some anxiety and nervousness, so we do ask that there not be any boos or cat calls or applause or other demonstrations that when try to maintain a civil discourse in the chambers. All right, with that, we're going to proceed then to item 1A. We have one request to speak, and that's by Mr. Bill Lowell. And as Mr. Lowell's coming up, let me just announce that the agenda item seven with respect to the main drain and agenda item 13 with respect to the bike pedestrian master plan are both being continued, one at the request of the friends of the main drain, the partner in that agreement, and then second, the city manager's requested that item 13 be continued to the April 10th meeting. So if you're here for item seven or item 13, those items will be considered at a future meeting. All right, thank you, Mr. Lowell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor William Lowell, West Sacramento, for the record. And at 1:30 this afternoon over at the Ramada Hotel in West Sacramento, from 1:30 to 4:30, they had a discussion on the pros and the cons of the two underwater canals taking water from the delta down to Southern California, and there were four or five individuals that got up and spoke rather vehemently against it. And my thought, my main concern is if that happens and everything, it seems to me like that's going to lose a lot of control of our water to our Southern California neighbors, and they'll have pretty much control over our water, and so there's a potential here for land up here becoming worth less with land further south becoming worth much more. And I still have to wonder also whether or not, whether it's financially advantageous to convert seawater to drinking water like they do over in Israel, and they sell it to their adversaries, I understand, so it seems like they ought to consider that too because they had seawater conversion places up and down the state, why they could keep the inner part of the state greener and reduce the potential for fires and all that kind of stuff. So anyway, it's just some thoughts for this evening. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lowell. All right, that's our only request on item 1A, so we're going to proceed to item 1B, Council Communications. Are there any reports or other communications this evening? Mr. Villegas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last week, the Sacramento Regional County Sanitation District met, and I don't think there were any items to report. They were pretty benign consent items. Monday, the Yolo County Transportation District met, several items, nothing too major other than just to let the council know the executive director brought up the issue as we've all been invited to the Yolo County Courthouse Construction Event. I think it's coming up next week or two, and there's been a little snag with some of the conversations occurring regarding bus routes and bus stops actually in front of the courthouse. There's some issues with the facilities rep for the county, or the -- yeah, I guess it's facilities rep for the county concerned about having bus stops near the courthouse, and they were unable to provide us really good reasons why they don't want them there other than possible vandalism, so we're not really satisfied with that answer. We think transportation, certainly transportation opportunities and bus stops in front of the courthouse, certainly for our residents, many of which have to travel 35, 40 minutes in one direction to get there, are essential, and so we haven't really given up on that issue. They didn't give us a satisfactory reason as to why they don't want them, so that'll be continued. And then this evening, the Executive Committee for the Universal Preschool up for West Sac met, and just in general, things are going very well. We've got the three-year funding in place that's given us a lot of opportunities to expand the seats for preschool. We have currently 494 children enrolled, and there are only 12 vacant seats after some of the good work that our staff has done recently to really do some good outreach and make sure that those slots are available, so we've got a good pool of kids in our Universal Preschool program. That's it.
Mr. Johansson.
Thank you. The Yellow Saloon, our quality management district, met on March 13th. We received two reports. One is on the 2012 ozone season, and the other was a report on the air monitoring program, which basically described all the different monitoring stations within the district. You probably know that this district, the main pollutant is ozone, which it's the only area where we haven't received any kind of attainment, and 70% of that's resulting from mobile sources. So there's not a whole lot we can do except for share rides and policy considerations such as that, but the good news is since 1999, we've actually seen a reduction in ozone in the district while we've had miles per travel greatly exceeded. So it is having an impact even on that pollutant.
Mr. Kristoff.
Yeah, very grateful. Last week, the JPA Flood Protection West Sacramento City and RD 900 and RD 537, we met, and the main topic of discussion was the GRR. Because of sequester, the GRR may be delayed even further than what has happened in the past because there will be some furloughing and there will be some other things that the Corps is going through. Greg and our staff has been doing an outstanding job as far as trying to meet with the Corps and see if we can get that schedule back on track because that is a very, very important milestone for the city of West Sacramento to hit because of the funding and different things that go on because of the GRR itself. Other than that, that was really the main topic.
All right, I also wanted to note the U.S. Senate's Environment and Public Works Committee today reported out unanimously its version of the Water Resources Development Act legislation. Senator Boxer chairs that committee, and the legislation includes three key components that we care a lot, two that we care a lot about right now and one of which we hope to care about soon. First, it addresses the vegetation on the levees policy that is a continuing nuisance, both financially but also in terms of habitat and river paths and everything else. More fundamentally for us, it addresses the crediting, the federal crediting issue with respect to local and state investments in levees to provide both the credit that we need and the certainty going forward on projects like the Southport Levy. And then third, more remote for us but critical for the region and hopefully important to us, once the GRR is complete, it allows for an alternative process for projects that get through a GRR and get a chief's report to actually get the funding to move forward, which has been the problem with the Sacramento project in Natomas post, once the Congress eliminated earmarks but didn't create any other mechanism, any replacement mechanism for appropriating funding for levy projects. The Senate bill would allow for certain projects with chief reports to automatically get funded without having to have an earmark attached to them. So that passed on a bipartisan basis, which was important. Senator Vitter from Louisiana, which is the other, you know, in addition to Sacramento Region, the other major flood risk area of the country, although there are hundreds of others, has been a major supporter and backer of that. So that's positive. The House remains the major, the House of Representatives remains the major challenge on all of those issues going forward, so it'll be, it'll continue to be a major focus at cap to cap to try to move both the Senate bill forward and encourage the House to, you know, to adopt something that is roughly similar or equivalent so that we can get a new word, a new Water Resources Development Act this year that addresses some of these key challenges for us. All right, and if there are no further communications, item 1C is appointment to boards and commissions, and we have two of them this evening for the Parks and Community Services Commission. I'm appointing Francisco Castillo, and the council has his application, and for the Port District Commission, I am reappointing myself. The council members are serving all of the city's seats on that commission, and we've staggered terms, and so I'm making both of those appointments and asking if there's motion to confirm them.
Second. Sorry.
I'll second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, turning down that motion carries. Thank you. We're going to consolidate item two into the consent agenda because the presentation, the presentee is not present, so we're going to consider the consent agenda, which is items two through 10 minus item seven. Remember, item seven has been deferred to future date at the request of the Friends of the Main Drain Parkway. So items two through 10, are there any of those items that I remember the council wishes to remove, or any items for separate question or comment?
Comment on three. Question?
First, I will make a comment on two before we pass through, so I'll let the question go on item three first.
Villegas, any?
Nope.
All right, and I have six and eight. All right, item two is proclamation recognizing March 20th as Mayor's for Meals Day in West Sacramento. Mayor Potam LaDesma.
Thank you. I just want to make a quick note that that march is recognized as March for Meals Month, which is dedicated to recognizing all the programs throughout the country that provide meals on wheels. We have a local board I'm happy to be a part of, which is the Elderly Nutrition Program of Yolo County, which provides all the meals, hot meals to elderly residents across the county. It's a great organization. It's a nonprofit organization. We're about 70% of its contributions come from private contributions, so we count on our community very much to keep that program going, but it also likes to have the opportunity to thank all the volunteers throughout West Sacramento who help deliver meals throughout the week and provide those seniors with a hot meal. So I'm sorry that our presentee or board member wasn't able to make it today, but I do want to recognize that organization today, so thank you.
All right, thank you. Item three is a request for consideration of loan subordination, loan modification, and assumption of city loan documents to facilitate the refinance and rehabilitation of the Holly Courts Housing Development. Mr. Kristoff.
All right, John. Hey, do we have a reserve maintenance fund on the affordable project?
Does the city?
Yes.
That's kept by the project, and they do have a reserve fund, and that's going to stay with, that's going to stay with the project.
So that reserve fund must not be adequate if they're going to try to resell and then use that money to refurbish the apartments?
It's not adequate to do the improvements that have been identified that are needed. That's correct.
I guess my major objection is here, we've been paying on this now for 18 years, 19 years, something like that, and we want to extend it another 27 that runs it to a 55-year term. I mean, it seems like if that is truly the case, it'll come up again in the future, and only Chris LaDesma will be on the council then, but it'll come up in the future, and we never pay it off.
Do you know how many former council members he's said that to?
Well, it's actually, it's actually the term will be a new 55-year term for that increase of 27 years, and you're right, I mean, there is the possibility that this kind of thing comes up. I mean, there's a couple of factors that mitigate that. I mean, the improvements that this developer has selected are intended to last, you know, a long time, so the idea is not to have to do this again within the next couple decades. And, you know, with the reserves that are already there and the additions that will be made to those reserves, the idea is to try and forestall that possibility, but it's, you're right. I mean, the intent, though, is ultimately if, when the affordability restrictions come off, the rent can come back up, and there will be sufficient funds there to repay the debt. That's the theory. Now, the reality is that in all likelihood, you know, a new structure will come along to, that will require, you know, the ongoing maintenance of this debt, but in the meantime, the city gets the units. So we do, under this structure, get more payments, we project, than we would have under the existing loan, so there's that financial piece, and in addition, we're, you know, getting the benefit of the addition to the affordable housing stock.
In the previous agreement in the, in the staff report, it talked about having a citizens' advisory group where two members from our hack and other members from within the community are on an advisory committee.
In which staff report?
On Holly Court.
In the one I wrote?
Yeah. In this one.
I don't recall that part. I'm sorry.
Okay, well, anyway, I'm pretty sure.
We have two, two members on the CHOC.
Yeah, two members on the CHOC Board. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm CHOC Board, and I guess, and there is an advisory board also to talk about issues that arise out at Holly Court?
No, I think the point we were trying to make there is that, is that there are members from the West Sacramento Housing Development Corporation that also sit on the Community Housing Opportunities Corporation board, so that was, that was the only point there. There's, to my knowledge, not like a separate advisory board specific to this project.
Well, did our HAC, did it bid on, CHOC's wish to sell the property? I mean, did they have the opportunity to put in a proposal?
They did.
And this report says that they weren't the one that was chosen, it went to somebody else.
Right.
So how much is this going to cost? How much is CHOC selling to Link the Holly Court complex?
The price of the, you know, I don't know the answer to that. Maybe, we have a representative here from Link who would probably be able to answer that.
Good evening, sir. I'm Allison Riley with Link Housing. Nice to see you tonight.
Pleasure.
The purchase price is $3.5 million, $3,561,000.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Well, I guess for me, the thing that is upsetting is to refinance these kinds of things over and over and over again. I mean, I look at it like this may even be precedent setting for some of our other projects, that all of a sudden they're going to become well-used and need some upgrades and whatever else it may be, and they're just going to sell to another nonprofit and then extend the term, extend those, extend the terms for a longer period of time, and you never get to the point where you're paying it off. It just, and so I don't want to have this become precedent setting. We've got a number of housing projects, and a lot of them need some work, and I just want to make sure we're trying to find a way that we can do the work, we can increase the comfort of those units, but at the same time, live within our means and pay for it like we would our own house or something, and not take out a loan and have that thing extended, because you can never, you never catch up.
The point, the point is well taken, and we do, we do look at that when these kind of applications come in, so that, you know, this kind of thing, I don't think will be precedent setting in terms of setting off a stream of these that might not have happened otherwise. We do look and see that the renovations are necessary and that the financing is what's required to accomplish those renovations.
Okay, thank you.
So, John, as the, as the funds are repaid on these, on these loans, where do they go? Weren't these originally housing set aside funds, or, I mean, they weren't, we weren't deploying regular old general funds.
That's correct.
For projects like this. They were, they were specific funds that were only available for housing-related purposes.
Right, they would get recycled back into the housing program.
But, I don't know if these, these specific ones were, we use the redevelopment set aside for housing, which we know, which, I don't, how's that work now? If that, that fund doesn't exist, or it just exists only for the purpose of receiving loan repayments? How's this, how's this working?
Mechanically, I'm not, I'm not exactly sure. The funds, the funds that come in don't go into the general fund, though. They stay, they stay for use as new loans or as new, as new housing developments.
Okay, all right. Well, I mean, it makes me more comfortable. I think that, for me, the bigger question, not on this one necessarily, but just sort of, we have this general issue with apartments and affordable projects more generally, is needing to, needing to foresee the need for significant upgrades and renovations in advance. I mean, this, this was a good project when it was built, but it was, we intended it to last for, you know, what, 30 years at least?
Right.
Right, so that, so the project should have been financed in a way and managed in a way that would, that would have been saving the money necessary in order to accomplish that. And we often get apartment owners or affordable projects coming to us and saying, "Well, we've got a, you know, our project's falling apart, and you don't want that to happen, do you? It would be a blight on the neighborhood. You have to help us out," and that's, that's not our job. So, you know, baking in an expectation of that at the front end on these, on this kind of project, I think is really important to avoid the kinds of issues that Mr. Kristoff has described, which I think are very well taken. All right, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, item six, oh, I pulled six, but I didn't mean to, which was the TSM for the West Capital Commons Project there. Mike, I was just saying, I didn't mean to pull the, pull number six, so. Item eight is Consideration of City Vision 2028 Goals 2013-18 Policy Management Agenda for 2013. This is the action item relating to the adoption of the strategic plan that the council did in January. I don't know, I don't recall doing it this way before, where we had a follow-on formal action of the council. The only thing, the only caution I would give, and I'm going to vote for it, is that a lot of the details and milestones and actions, that's not, we didn't discuss that.
Right.
And, and so they tend to be, the actions and milestones here are entirely staff-generated, and so don't, in many cases, don't capture the nuances of what was discussed at the council. Now, obviously, it's important that that be captured somewhere, right, because you, the staff, neither the manager nor the staff can simply walk around with a Ouija board trying to, trying to imagine what the council had intended, but we didn't go through a process to elaborate on these any further, and as a result, they tend to be fairly mundane actions. You know, we wanted, we had, we identified a grand goal, and staff said, "Well, what are the, you know, what are the six things that we have to do from a regulatory perspective or a financing agreement perspective between now and December?" And that's what shows up on our list. But just to emphasize, that's not, I mean, in terms of, for our own accountability, I think, I know the city manager knows, but just to emphasize that, that we're, I mean, we've identified some large objectives that we're trying to drive towards, and simply accomplishing, you know, an update of the water model and an RFP being issued might seem like that's half of, halfway there, but it's nothing if it's not actually accomplishing the infrastructure. So just, just as a caveat, because I don't think we have done that this way before, and I appreciate the, the work to try to make this more transparent and also more solid. I think it gets that way.
Well, in the future, would you prefer not to?
No, no, I'm fine with it, but I just, I don't want to over, you know, it's like taking, you know, a number out to 17 decimals. It's more, there's more precision here than there probably, than I think there was in the overarching strategic plan, which is not a bad thing at all as an implementation document, but all I would say, all I'm saying is, come back in six months and say, "Where are we on, on the grant, on the Southport Levy project?" That I think, you know, the specific milestones here, I mean, the council's interest is in, are we getting that project done? Not necessarily on all the, on these, these details, these details only. It's not worth us all spending the time trying to fill in every box on this, on the charts, not by any means, but just to, just to remind all of us, remind us and the manager that our strategic plan is, lives up here. You've got it implemented, you know, in various places and in an opportunistic way down here, but that the document itself is a tool.
And we've simply tried to get buy-in by every member of the staff in terms of the strategic plan. We've, we've just had a recent forum with, with the staff. We've produced more of the posters for every office to make it a bigger priority, and then to educate staff across the different departments on how these, even though it may be a public works project, police, fire may have some opportunities for input on it as well, but I understand the details is probably not something that would be appropriate for council review.
Okay. Item, oh, that's it on the consent, then. That's everyone's item. So we have before-sent items two, two through 10 minus item seven. If there's no further questions, Mr. Johansson moves.
Second.
Mr. Mayor Potam LaDesma, second, said the consent agenda be adopted. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing non-motion carries. Item 10 is a public hearing in consideration of Resolution 13-2 Amending the Book of Fees for Various City Regulatory Activities, Products, and Services.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. Natasha Sharma with City Finance. Today, I'd like to request council to conduct a public hearing and adopt Resolution 13-2 Amending the Book of Fees to Adopt Charges for Various City Regulatory Services, Activities, Products, and Services. I'd like to give you a brief overview of the, of the proposed changes and answer any questions you might have. The first category of the fee is the citywide reimbursement. Staff determined, you know, we actually did extensive review of our current book of fees, and we determined that currently staff costs are being listed under departments in various schedules, and it's very hard to find. So one of the things we are implementing is making it easy for our citizens to find staff costs and any other things where we could reorganize and create efficiency. So staff is proposing that a number of fee schedules be moved under citywide service reimbursement, and we have a consistent formula that's going to be applied to each of the fee schedules. Before, each department has had their own methodology to recover cost, and we always were debating which, which formula should be used, so we are trying to create a consistent formula. The next fee category is the construction permit fee. As you can see, it's been about, the last fee schedule change was in 2009, and since 2009, 2008, actually, staff has been implementing cost-cutting measures and also creating, using efficiencies and also using one-time revenues to fund the, to provide the services that can be sustained. This year, we've been experiencing some increase in permit revenues, and we noticed that a number of the permits that's been coming is over-the-counter permits where staff can actually issue the permit at the counter, which will require a very minimal plan reviews. So one of the things we looked at is our actual cost, and it looks like, right now, we're actually not even covering 50% of our costs, so we're proposing a modest increase to this fee. We actually did a survey of others, actually, we looked at the other fees for other jurisdictions, and it's very, it's pretty comparable with other cities around here. The next fee I'd like to go over with you would be the fire prevention fee, and this fee, the change is because of the new building code that's been implemented in January of 2011. Every new residential permit application after January 1, 2011, actually requires a sprinkler system, so it requires more inspection on our staff, so current fee is not covering the cost, so we are, again, proposing a modest increase to cover some of that expense. The next fee category is re-roofing permit, and again, in here, we have currently 14 level of fee schedules, so 14 levels of fee, so it's very hard for us to calculate the fee, so what we did, we are, we are making it more efficient, actually, we're making it more easy to, for citizens where we are creating only two levels. 1236, that covers most of the residential and some commercial, small commercial, and then 36 up will be larger projects. So we did a, we did an extensive review of this fee schedule, and we are proposing some increase to this, too. The last schedule I'd like to go over briefly is the residential and commercial photovoltaic system. As Assembly Bill 1407 and 2473, it requires that any new photovoltaic system be installed in accordance with the guidelines set by California's Soli- in accordance with the guidelines set by California's Solar Rights Act. So, we, our current fee actually is not covering any of the costs because of the mandatory requirement for inspection, so we're proposing a increase in there, too. As, to conclude the presentation, staff presentation, some of these fee revenues will help us fund the counter hours even more, because right now, we actually have very limited counter hours because of the reduce in permit applications. So, this concludes staff's presentation. I have representatives available here from different departments, if you have any questions on any specific fee.
Mr. Johansson.
Yeah, as you see, as we start to move into more online access and more technology when we're doing the permitting and some of these other services, are we starting to see a reduction in staff time that would translate into lower fees?
I would speak, most of the staff time is actually actual inspection cost, so we have to be out on the field, and as you can see, our proposed fee is not covering our actual costs. Once we implement the online system, we may have a reduced, we will create efficiency, we will reduce our costs, but most of our cost currently is related to inspections that we are performing out in the field.
And all those inspections are mandatory? I know that for roofing, there's four inspections that are needed.
Yeah, I believe so, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Questions? So, the, I mean, the, nobody here likes fee increases. At the same time, if there are services that are being delivered and we're not charging adequately for them, then the city, the overall city has to pay the difference, or if you're getting the, if we have to expend that much for, you know, for 546 new sprinkler heads, if we're spending $437 and we're only collecting $215, then it's the taxpayers of the city that are providing a subsidy for that project. So, it's not like it just doesn't go, by cutting fees, that we just, nobody has to pay. Somebody does, it's just, is it being subsidized by every other residential and commercial property owner in the community? So, it makes sense to calibrate our fees better, and you're not proposing in any of these areas to even match our costs.
Yes.
On the other hand, the, we also need to control costs, and are all the other jurisdictions that much out of whack as well with their costs? Or are our, I mean, I know you don't know how much El Grove or Sacramento Fire are spending to do these things, or maybe you do, but their fees, I mean, some, you know, some of them have fees that are lower or higher, and are they not recovering their costs either?
You know, some of the cities, they are larger. El Grove has more permit applications, and we are a much smaller city, so they are able to have a lower fee because of the volume, so, and we are, as the staff has done, is our actual cost, we're below our actual cost, because if the volume increases, we're hoping to cover that difference.
All right. All right, then, we're going to open the public hearing on item 10. We have no request to speak on this item, but because it is a legal public hearing, we're going to ask, does anyone wish to address the council on this item? All right, seeing none, then, we're going to close the public hearing. Turn to the council for any further questions, comments, or for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move that we adopt resolution 13-2, amending the book of fees to adopt charges for various city regulatory activities, products, and services.
Before you do, can I ask a question of staff? Yeah, is Parks and Rec here? No.
Did not.
Okay, one of the, one of the fees, or one of the issues on trip fees?
Yes.
One of the issues that has been brought to my attention by some of the senior citizens that go on these bus trips to Reno and wherever it is, they don't want to have to pay in advance. If they go, they want to pay.
Out of their winnings?
Well, no. They would pay before they got on the bus.
They want to pay proportion.
But they don't want to pay in advance or be penalized when they do show up at wherever the bus is. So, I guess I really need to have a little understanding of what the philosophical approach is to having them pay in advance. I mean, I realize that Bob and the staff over there want to have a full bus, and they need to know how many people are coming and all that, but the seniors that do go on that are telling me that if it is, if it's advertised, the buses are full. And so, I'm trying to figure out what the approach is and what would happen.
Mr. Kristof, I think there was two issues there. There was, you mentioned one of them, that Parks and Rec likes people to pay in advance so they can be assured of a full bus. They've had, they have had some instances where it really, they really have not had enough population on the bus to warrant going to Lake Tahoe or Reno, wherever they're going. There's a secondary issue that you've probably heard about is if they, is paying, if they don't pay in advance, they have to pay $5 more for a late fee, if you will. We're looking at that particular fee, and I'm trying to eliminate that $5 late fee charge. So, it's kind of a combination of two issues there, trying to make sure we have enough people to warrant going on the trip and then waiving the late fee for some people who pay late.
Okay, so when will we know what we can do with that $5 fee?
We should know probably by the end of this month. I, Bob Johnson was on vacation when this came up, and so I wanted to confirm it with him before we change that.
Thank you. Okay, I'm sorry, Oscar, I didn't mean to.
All right, so Mr. Viegas, ready to the motion on the item? Is her second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item 11 is an update on state legislation in consideration of resolution 13-19 and letters of support for the state enterprise zone program.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Just a brief introduction on this item. We're well into the legislative session, the state legislative session for 2013. As you know, our top priorities in state legislation have been and will continue to be throughout this session, working on legislation to restore some form of tax increment to advance our objectives on the Community Investment Action Plan as a way to fund infrastructure and economic development in the post-redevelopment environment. We're also, we've been busy tracking legislation and other reform efforts related to the enterprise zone program. So, a few actions are recommended tonight. The first one is a general authorization for the city manager to act on behalf of the city to execute letters of support and other advocacy activities related to state legislation deemed to advance community investment. What we're really talking about there are the bills related to IFDs, other tax increment forms, much in the same as we did last session, but we wanted to get a formal authorization for the city manager to be able to act in a nimble sort of fashion, because, as you know, the pace of legislation can move rapidly and change quickly, so we need to be able to respond. The other recommendations, there's a resolution supporting the state enterprise zone program and a couple of letters of support to Senate President Protem Steinberg and Assembly Member Dickinson in support of the enterprise zone program. Next, we're going to have Amy Brown, our state lobbyist from Damari Van Blacken-Brown, give you a presentation on some additional perspective about our approach during this session. Ernesto Lucero is here as well to answer any technical questions about the enterprise zone program, and I'll be available as well. So, without further ado, introduce Amy.
Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you for having me here tonight. The staff had asked me to sort of go over a legislative update on these tax increment tools and what has happened over the last couple of years. So, the city supported three bills, two dealing with infrastructure finance districts and one dealing with sustainable community investment authorities. We worked tirelessly to get those bills through the legislative process, at the same time tacking with the Department of Finance and the governor's office about, once those bills hit the governor's desk, would he be inclined to sign. What we heard from those discussions was that it was a little too premature, that they wanted to see the full wind down of RDA elimination before they made any decisions on what kind of tax increments could be put to use. And that's exactly what happened. In the veto message, the governor said he would rather have cities focus on the wind down as opposed to focusing efforts on using these new tools. So, the other thing that he had mentioned in these veto messages is that he wants to realize or really understand the state, how much the state is achieving in terms of savings with regard to the RDA elimination. So, where are we now? So, those similar bills have been reintroduced this year, same authors. We will continue to support those, actively support them by speaking with legislators. I think our biggest challenge is still with the governor's office and the Department of Finance. However, because there are 39 new members who were sworn in in December, we have a lot of education to do as well, so we will continue to do that with your team. But again, we are going to continue to have these conversations with the Department of Finance and the governor's office, and in fact, have had them as late as December of last year and January of this year. I think once the revised budget comes out in May, we will continue to circle back and see how the winding down process is where it is and see if there's any will this year, silver lining in terms of timing, whether or not he's going to sign those. The other thing that the staff had asked me to talk about is the enterprise zone program and the discussions that are occurring in the legislature, as well as the governor's office and the housing and community development, which is outlined in your staff report. The governor outlined in his budget, as well as his secretary, excuse me, the state of the state, that enterprise zones aren't working and that he believes that it does little to create jobs or development, and he's looking to significantly reform those. So, he and the department have been working together on proposed regulations, which are outlined in your staff report. What we are asking is that the legislature get involved in that effort and have some coordination with the Housing and Community Development Department. The legislature does have the authority to override and amend all or parts of the regulations, and as it turns out, as of the end of February, there are eight enterprise zone bills that have been introduced, an additional six enterprise zones spot bills that have been introduced. So, there's going to be a lot of activity over the next couple of months with regard to this. In particular, Senator Steinberg is promoting a bond called the Dropout Reduction in Workforce Development Bond of 2013, and he had mentioned recently, when asked, how are you going to repay some of those bond debt? He said perhaps the savings realized through scaling back the enterprise zones. So, this is going to be at the forefront of discussions this year. I know that the legislature wants to have a significant amount of involvement in those discussions, so, you know, from our perspective, I think, on behalf of the city, we need to stay vigilant and work with leadership on both the assembly and senate side to help improve the enterprise zone programs, not eliminate them, and engage a dialogue with the department on those regulations. So, I'm here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Ladesma?
Thank you. Thank you, Amy, for coming down and giving us an update on the legislation and enterprise zones. Just a couple of questions, because it's in regards to the wind down. Was there a sense that you received from the governor's office or Department of Finance and how it actually is going? I know you said in May, you'll get an updated budget, and we'll be able to see, I think, hard data on any recoveries they are getting, but did they get a sense that it's going well? Or is it that it's, that they, there has to be a time when?
They said that they'll give us some feedback in May, and they did indicate that they're dealing with a lot of lawsuits right now, probably in the neighborhood of 50, and so they're a little preoccupied on those types of issues now. So, we will find out in May.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. And thanks for your work as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Johansson.
Yeah, I think I'm fine with the IFDs and the other support that we're doing, but on the enterprise zones, I mean, are they working? I guess that's my question. If someone asked me if, you know, I mean, it's someone else's money, I guess you could say, but it's really all of our money, but is there any evidence that they are working in West Sacramento? Because obviously, you know, if you're creating a job and those people spend the money in the community, you have an indirect benefit that supports shops and things of that nature, but what is the argument that they are working?
Staff, do you want to address that?
They do what they're supposed to do.
Sure. So, we've done significant outreach to businesses in the community, and we've seen a number of small businesses using the program, and we've issued, I think, some of the statistics in the staff report say that we've issued over 750 vouchers, and many of those, I would say about 40, I think it's 40%, are hiring local citizens that live in our targeted employment area, so these are residents living in the most economically distressed parts of the city.
I guess, you know, if you're spending $40,000 or whatever on one job, what does the community get back for that?
I'm sorry?
If you spend $40,000 on one job or $10,000 on one job, is there a way to quantify what the city gets back?
We haven't done that analysis in depth, but we, you know, we, we're currently updating a system with these regulations that are asking for significant numbers to prove that the program is working. In the case of not just hiring people, but also, these businesses are making investments in the community and using the sales and use tax credit, and so, on equipment that's purchased, they receive a credit as well. So, there's significant amounts of investment in the community as far as hiring people and purchasing equipment. And with these new regulations that are coming out, we're proposing to report to the state on how the program is working through additional statistics.
Yeah, I just think it's important, I mean, we talked about the hotel later on, but it's helpful to be able, at least for our constituents, to be able to articulate the indirect economic benefit that this is doing, because it is money going out, and everybody's concerned about money going out, but, you know, we need to be able to say, well, okay, if $10,000 is going out, we're getting $20,000 back in terms of economic development and, you know, the support that we can do to our community. So, to give us tools to be able to talk to our constituents, I think is really helpful, particularly as we start looking at using public money for these projects.
Sure.
Just a comment.
And I can say that statewide, that the numbers are, the program, just last year, there were almost 96,000 jobs retained, and it created over 24,000 jobs.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Comments? All right, thank you. So, the recommendation before, it's schizophrenic one, you, I'm sure whether to follow the, our municipal code that determines that it's my, I have the responsibility to communicate these positions to the legislature or the city manager? You have it in both ways? What's the, I'm sure your intention is the one that's consistent with the municipal code, but can I just clarify for, because one and three don't match up, which, what are you guys actually recommending?
On number one, we certainly could have, have it be the mayor. We're really talking about, on letters of support, that sort of thing, especially at the early stage, the volume of those is quite high. Ideally, I think we would say both would be optimal for things like letters of support, but if your council's desires to authorize the mayor, that'd be perfectly fine as well.
Let's just avoid internal litigation, and let's just do that. All right, that's, I don't have too many core actual responsibilities as mayor, that's one of them.
Right.
All right.
So, we would say authorize the mayor.
All right. Other, any other questions? Comments? Is there a motion then?
So moved.
Okay. This is moved by Mr. Ladesma, seconded by Mr. Johansson with that change. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed, hearing none. Motion carries. Item 12 is a public workshop regarding the Grand Gateway Project area, master planning document and implementation strategies. And just as a reminder for folks who may have joined the meeting late, item 13 has been continued to April 10th, will not be considered tonight, and for any of the remaining agenda items, that if you wish to speak on any of the agenda items, that you do need to fill out and turn in one of the yellow cards to the city clerk prior to the conclusion of the staff report on the item that you want to speak about. All right. Mr. Ramirez?
Yes, good evening, Mayor, council members. Most of you may recall, at the end, or beginning of January, this item, the Grand Gateway Project came before you in a workshop format. At that time, staff was looking for feedback to help produce a planning document, and we were awarded some grant funds from the local government commission, and we hired a consultant, and we've been working on that particular document for the past several months. For those that don't know, the Grand Gateway is located, and we For those that don't know, the Grand Gateway is located and we pretty much know that project area to be the Delta Lane Project, our Delta Lane site, Tower Court site, and the Old Experience Motel site. This is located in proximity to the West Capitol Avenue underpass and just adjacent to Rayleigh's headquarters. At that council workshop meeting in January, staff and the consultant outlined some particular planning objectives for this particular document. And those were to determine and locate the focus of commercial activity for the site, define the terminus for West Capitol Avenue view corridor, resolve and determine functionality of West Capitol Avenue access connection, and determine the location and role of the civic space. At the last workshop meeting, staff also presented three framework plans which uniquely address the planning objectives with varying open space and circulation choices. Each framework is designed to support transit, bicycle mobility, the pedestrian, and this is to intersect with the urban context and thereby creating a walkable pedestrian environment rather than one primarily served by the automobile. Tonight, the consultant will provide detailed discussion of option B. The council may recall this alternative came up in the last discussion and council indicated some preference for and directed staff to modify this option. The document in general contains detailed design guidelines and also includes a blueprint for implementing other actions that are implementation type strategies, and that's found in Chapter 7. At this point, staff is looking for additional council feedback. This item did go before the Planning Commission in late February and they gave its endorsement and recommendation with some minor clarification and edits and forwarded a recommendation for council to eventually adopt the document based on further discussion and any type of new recommendations. So, tonight, staff is just looking, not looking for a decision and not looking to adopt, but to get further clarification related to the framework option. In addition, staff would like to bring this back in the beginning of May. This will allow an opportunity for another council item we're tracking in April 10th, which has to do with the West Capitol Avenue underpass and infrastructure improvements. There may be, based on feedback from that meeting, some indication of further refining the document and implementing whatever decision could be made at that meeting into this document. So, that's why we would return on May, in the beginning of May. Chris Jansen with Opticos Design from Berkeley is here tonight and he will kind of take over the remainder of the presentation and kind of outline the remaining chapters. And then, upon conclusion of his presentation, we can turn it back to the council and staff will be willing to address any questions you may have at that time.
Jim, just before we get to that, on the Planning Commission action, so they adopted the resolution recommending our approval with some minor refinements, and they have some paragraphs here about the commission's perspectives about parking and vehicular access. Where the, it's not always clear in our staff reports whether the commission, when you say the commission, the commission voted on these...
Correct.
...these positions? Because in other places, you say things like, "The commission seemed to want to have this happen." And so, these are, the request that we allow cars right in the middle of this thing and that we have a lot of parking, were both formal actions to the commission as part of the resolution?
That's correct.
Okay, thanks.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Thank you for the opportunity to talk through the plan. We have two sections. The first, we're going to kind of walk through the document and the guidelines and talk a little bit about the goals and objectives for each chapter and what we're looking to regulate. And then, secondly, towards the end is actually discussion of the refined preferred alternate plans. Chapter 2 of the document talks about neighborhood design. One of the key features of that is really looking at connectivity and creating a network of interlinking streets, blocks, and public open space, trying to create a system of thoroughfares that provide multiple routes to different destinations, using alleys to provide access to service areas and parking, creating walkable block sizes, and enhancing the pedestrian experience in the area. Also, in Chapter 2, we talked about land use and parking. The big overriding principle there is mixed-use development, finding ways to support public transportation and all-day active uses. For parking, the acronym SMART, using structures that complement mixed-use development, maximize, maximums ensuring efficient use of infill sites, access to parking that complements traffic flow, requirements met through other means. This would be the provision of in-lufes or enabling developers to meet parking requirements and using other means, and transit, helping support transit by really managing the parking supply on the site. Chapter 3 gets into the regulations, focusing on building form. For this section, we organized the regulations based on a variety of building types that we thought would be appropriate for development of the site, and then also provided regulations for what the form of that building would look like. Here's an example of a live-work building. We talk about where it has to be set in relationship to the street, percentage of the frontage that would have to be defined by the building, maximum height, where the ground floor is, level is, what's the minimum clearance for the ground floor, what's the minimum depth to ensure that we're creating functional retail space, the clear, the clear space for the open space, and then where the entrance to the building is located. The next section of the building form also looked at frontage types. This really looked at how the buildings would interface with the public realm, trying to define that, that interface of building and sidewalk. We create, looked at a variety of frontage types ranging from stoop, forecourt, dooryard, shopfront, gallery, and terrace, and then provided regulations for each one of those different frontage types. And also, as you can see at the bottom, there is actually a table that talks about how the various frontage types and building types would work together. Chapter 4, we looked at civic spaces. During the analysis, we noted that this area could support additional civic space, looking at the amount of open space or civic space within a quarter mile of the project site. But we also wanted to make sure that there was a variety of civic space sizes ranging from a more formal neighborhood square all the way down to a small pocket plaza. Chapter 5 looks at thoroughfares, looking at primarily how the sidewalk would be created and what's, what's the type of sidewalk, the public frontage that's for each of the thoroughfares. And then also looking at the lane configurations and parking width and right-of-way width for the, for a variety of thoroughfares. Also, that section also addressed bicycle lanes, ensuring that bicycle lanes are provided with adequate width and what the different types of bicycle lanes would be, class 1, class 2, and class 3. This is an example here. In Chapter 7, we actually looked at how this, these different thoroughfares would be applied to the variety of options that we presented in, at the January meeting. This really shows, is intended to show how the flexibility that we have in the plan and talk about how these different regulations could be applied to a variety of schemes depending on what the council has decided as a preferred plan and also still having the flexibility to respond should a developer come at a later date with a slightly different plan and ensuring that this, this plan still has a level of flexibility. Chapter 6 looked at architectural guidelines, primarily focusing on massing and composition, openings and site definition. We identified two styles of architecture, and this was in response to some of the comments that we received during our public meeting, one being the more traditional, somewhat referencing industrial warehouse buildings, and then another one actually looking at some more modern or California contemporary style architecture. Chapter 7 addresses implementation. The master plan that we created provides the vision and design guidelines. Chapter 7 contains an action plan, really a strategy for implementing the master plan. It identifies the additional steps needed. Some of it's requiring additional council direction, identifying new resources for development, secret review, et cetera. And a lot of that is really dependent upon the selection of a preferred alternative.
Excuse me, I apologize.
While we're waiting to catch up, will West Capitol Avenue, will it connect from City Hall through the project to the Tower Bridge?
That is one of the questions that is kind of yet to be determined, looking at our plan. The three options that we presented look at a variety of ways that that connection could be addressed. The first option really looked at maintaining that connection all the way through. Second option looked at actually restricting it to be more bicycle and pedestrian, a bicycle and pedestrian connection through the underpass. The last option looked at it really what would happen if it would, would go away and there would actually just be a streets connecting through the project area but not actually going under the railroad, railroad overpass. Jim, would it be appropriate for us to discuss the guideline section initially while, before we...
Yeah, I mean, we have the full document plus the staff report. So, let's just proceed as though the slides are never coming back.
Okay.
And just, and pull through.
Okay.
Okay. So, don't kill time, just go with the, what you were going to cover, let's just cover that.
Yes, so the last item that we want to discuss was actually looking at the different options. This is where the visual aids would be helpful, but...
Oh, I can do that.
Oh, that'd be, yes, yes.
Just put them on the table. And if they're in the document that we have, you can also refer us, at least to the page number.
Unfortunately, they were only in this presentation because they're not actually in the document.
Okay.
They're intended to get... All right, great. Okay, so, option D. The first plan, time we came before you, we presented three options. Our understanding was that we were to come back and look at a combination of option B and C, which would create a paseo or take a public passage, replacing the extension of West Capitol. We went ahead and drew that up. As we discussed with staff, there were some concerns that we had about that. One is potentially really limiting vehicular circulation through the site. Should the underpass be closed, we're basically left with a cul-de-sac that would come in and, come in and access the site. And it also would create potentially traffic conflicts with a number of vehicles coming in and out of a structured parking on the corner. From that discussion, we looked at an option E. This was revised, provide two-way traffic leading into the parking garage and then one-way traffic between the parking garage and the small park with the circular traffic going around it. We did have some concerns there as we actually started looking at some of the regulations for fire, that that one-way street would still need to be very wide to accommodate fire truck access and potential conflicts with turning movements from cars, one-way street abutting at a two-way street. We think it could be addressed, but it really made us start to look at, you know, a lot of this was coming off of option B and, you know, what we could try to do to make option B and that street that comes through more pedestrian-friendly. We felt that there, part of the problem was option B didn't really have any of the big moves of the other two options. Option A had a big public park. Option C had a big paseo that led straight to the, straight to the underpass. So, we looked at ways that we could include in the design guidelines to actually talk about, you know, moving the streets, the street trees out to between the parking spaces to help neck down that area and make it feel narrower like a one-way, like the one-way street by still maintaining two-way traffic. We also discussed parklets. This is, this program was successful in San Francisco that actually we used parking spaces for small outdoor seating areas. They can be very informal. Some of them actually are more permanently constructed. And then also, as the, this is from the Tower Bridge Gateway Master Plan, also looking at, you know, ways that public art could be used to create focal points along, along the street and really help improve that, that street to make it feel more pedestrian-friendly while still providing the auto access that would be required for accessing the parking garage. And thank you, that's it.
All right. Well, I want to pick up on that piece because the, we, the grant money we got to do this project is air quality money, right? It's specifically intended to dramatically reduce vehicular trips. And so, I want to, I want to push back at my friends on the commission on the vehicular orientation. It's a common, it's a common theory of action from some of my suburban neighbors that the idea that you build a heavy car project at the beginning while you're waiting for the transit to come, and then as the transit comes, the hope is that people will just start to use that and then you could start reducing the parking. And there's no, there's no civilization on earth or any alternate universe where that's ever happened. That just doesn't occur where people say, "Oh, look, there's transit and there's also plenty of parking. I think I will take the transit." But the kind of place that people, for this location, not in a, not in a suburban location, the kind of place that people who are going to live here or that's going to be a boundary between the very intense urban landscape of the Bridge District and the very urban downtown that we're creating, depends on there not being parking everywhere and wide streets. And so, in the ideal world for anybody is where they have guaranteed parking whenever and whenever they want it and no one else can. Everyone else takes the bus or bikes, right? That's the perfect world because then you get your coffee house, you get your restaurant, you get your theater, you get your gallery, you get, everything's walkable when you want to, but you get your car. It doesn't work that way. And so, when we, when we say, when we do things like we say, "In the early phases, we'll provide lots of parking." We plant us, you know, a bomb inside the project from the outset that's essentially, this is not, we don't really mean it, it's not going to happen, and it's not going to transition to something else later on. So, you have to bake in from the beginning, those kinds of patterns. Yes, we had a problem with parking in the downtown here for like five hot minutes. After 100 years of no parking problems in downtown West Sacramento, and that's why it was so noticeable to us when we said, "Hey, we just opened a college, a library in City Hall, a community center, a theater, the farmer's market, we've got all these activities going on, and now we have a parking problem." Well, duh and good. That meant there were actually, people wanted to come to downtown West Sacramento. It was a positive. It's not a major problem today. It's not like it was 10 years ago where you could just come at any moment and park wherever you wanted to, and so could folks engaged in nefarious activities because no one was here with eyes on the street. But it's not like that anymore. But it's not like you are, I've never had to circle around downtown over and over, "Where am I going to park?" You'll find, you'll find a place to park for free, easily. So, it's not a challenge that, if that's what we're trying to avoid, it's not, that's not a problem. And so, I think we need, we just need to be very careful as we're designing these projects to design for what we're trying to create. And that community that we're trying to create, the place that we're trying to create depends, absolutely depends from the front end, on people occupying an urban space, living like it's an urban place. It's not Disneyland. It's a real, it's a real space and that only functions if we're baking in the transit, walking, and biking as real movement options from the very front end. So, we have to be really careful on that side and I, and similarly on the, on the, you know, keeping the thoroughfare through. That street is doomed for a lot of reasons, right? The notion that there'll be a throughway for cars on any significant, on any significant basis, doesn't work, and it's already not working. One of the most common complaints I get about Tower Bridge Gateway is that the light at Garden lasts for about five seconds. So, it turns green when you're on Tower Bridge Gateway and you're ready to cross the intersection, and it turns red before you've even crossed. Why is that? Because that intersection is trying to accommodate too many streets coming together simultaneously, West Capitol Avenue being the most significant, and there's no cars on it, right? So, we're radically disrupting our whole circulation system at one of our most critical places in the, in the current and future state of the city for a street that is really just a museum piece. I mean, it's serving Rayleigh's, but it doesn't, you don't need a street to serve Rayleigh's. Rayleigh's could occupy the entire, you know, the existing land there for itself and serving the mobile home park. And there's alternatives for that as well. And so, trying to, trying to deal with the, with the remnant of West Capitol Avenue as a working street has huge problems for circulation in the rest of the urban core, for the Bridge District, for Rayleigh's Landing, and for... for the Bridge District, for Railies Landing, and for our downtown already. And then to try to, you know, put cars in the middle of this development for that purpose, I think, is very ill-advised. Now, to the extent you have to do it to make the parking structure work, the parking structure is a critical component of the downtown area in total, because we need structures like that to avoid having to over, to build surface lots and lots of street parking everywhere. So the parking structure is really a critical component. So the extent to which you've incorporated vehicular access and done it in ways that are necessary for the parking structure, I get, I'm supportive of that, but not for itself, that, you know, just having cars, because we used to have cars go down West Capitol Avenue, is not, to me, not a core value compared to what, the value that we should be getting out of the Grand Gateway more generally. Off that topic, I love the form-based code approach. We've never tried it here in, at any scale. And there, you know, a lot of communities have, and there's pluses and minuses to it. We've never done it. I think this is a good, a good opportunity to move forward with it in a place that we have some control over. I mean, the notion being that our traditional approach to zoning and design is to say, this land is for retail, and then if McDonald's build there, McDonald's Mills, the same McDonald's that they're building in Rancho Cordova and Elk Grove and Kentucky and New York and whatever. And if you flew down from space, you open your eyes and say, I know that's a McDonald's. Whereas under a form-based code approach, we're designing, the buildings say West Sacramento. And McDonald's may be there today, and it might be Carl's Jr. tomorrow, it might be a specialty restaurant the next day, it might be something else after that. But if you flew down from space, you would open your eyes. Instead of saying, I know that's McDonald's, you would say, I know I'm in West Sacramento, which is how Landy's used to be a long time ago. So that, I think the approach of form-based codes, in terms of placemaking and in terms of creating some, in the potential at least for streamlined opportunities for development partners too is really high. So I'm glad to see that as a central animating theme in, as a replacement for our traditional Euclidean strategy in here. So I think this is really good work for the, for the amount of resources that we were able to get in the grant. Usually, this kind of planning is only able to be done when there's a big property owner that owns everything and that can help to subsidize it. And this is one of the few cases where, for property that's purely public-controlled, we got the resources to be able to plan it right from the front end. And I really appreciate the work both our consultants done and staff has done to bring us to this, to this stage. There's a lot of quality work in here.
Mayor Podemlidesma?
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation and the plan. I just have a couple of questions. And the mayor hit on a couple of them, and I, not to belabor his points, but there does need to be a focus less on the parking and more on the transit. When this came to us the first time, I think we were trying to ensure that there was, you know, when I think of transit-oriented neighborhoods and just neighborhoods in general, I think of the places I've been back east that are heavily transit-oriented and around Boston, whatever else. And the stops for the T or for wherever you're going on are just, you feel like you're arriving in Brookline, you're arriving in wherever. And I think that's sort of what the mayor was just getting at. So I do want to encourage that even more so as we move forward on the plan. I did have a question. I like the direction of form-based codes and what it stands for. I'm just trying to get a sense of from staff or whomever, and this could be down the line, of where it's worked and a better idea of sort of what it might, might bring. I mean, where actually, where a community like us have gone to that, being from a community where we are today. And what it has led to.
So we've written form-based codes on it, something that our firm specializes in. Livermore, California, has a combination, is kind of a hybrid form-based code, combining with their existing zoning. Mesa, Arizona, we also wrote a form-based code for their downtown and transit area. Again, it's usually really intended to promote walkable environments where really the interface between the public realm and private realm has the greatest impact. We're currently working with the City of Richmond, California, redoing a form-based code for their, for their commercial corridors. What, one of the other intentions of the form-based code is really to provide flexibility. So we're setting up the form for how it needs to interact. We found with, you know, the changing market, zoning something commercial or residential can create impediments for development. So what we're trying to focus on is setting the form and then being a little more flexible about what goes in the ground floor. If it's a real estate office or if it's a home office in the short term, as long as that could become a commercial space down the road and really heighten it. Hercules, the City of Hercules, California, has a form-based code there. They're slowly getting their commercial in line there. And then lastly, the City of Petaluma, around their smart, their smart station area, looking to try and spur development around their smart station in their downtown.
Thank you. I appreciate, it's hard to visualize where it actually occurs. I know I've seen, I've been through Petaluma, and I've seen some of the transition that actually Richmond is going through. So it's interesting you bring that up. The last point is around the implementation plan. And you have listed here an actual, in the draft plan, the action plan. But, and I think that some of the points in here are great. I guess that's a question for staff. We don't actually have a developer working on this. So there's nothing that to, we can bang our fists, this is what we want, but we're not talking to anybody, because no one's about to build this. So I guess my question is, is sort of, what do we do? I mean, all this is great actions, but what can we do to facilitate this and have it be ready when the developer comes? And is this, is there more refinement to this? And I see some of the action plans get to that, but I'm just trying to get a gauge of...
That's exactly what we did in response to some of the comments we got from the council, both on this as well as some prior grant projects that we've worked on. This actually, the action plan sort of goes beyond the vision scope of the grant. This is something that staff added. And it really was to start looking at the things that would be necessary to position this area for potentially an RFP to attract a developer. And so we can start clearing some of those things out of the way. But that will come later, and some of those may actually trigger some Sequo review. So currently in the vision state, this isn't triggering Sequo. But once we head more into the implementation, we'll likely have to do some environmental work. And this also too, may help us position for some grants to help fund some of that action plan.
Okay. I had another question, it escaped me, so I'll pass.
Can I respond just to the parking real quick? One of the things we did, we did want to do in the document is actually establish parking maximums rather than parking minimums, to really try and grant the flexibility that, you know, we realize this is a transit-first area and making sure that a developer could come in and build little to no parking for units on the site. And, you know, that really helps address affordability. There's a lot of benefits to really putting the transit first and parking first. I wanted to make sure that was, you know, that was one of the goals of this project and, you know, we are trying to, trying to address that.
Johansson and Mr. Kristof?
Yeah, I just want to reiterate the parking and the car access here. This is a little bit different than this area right around the City Hall in that I think our streetcar is still on schedule for March of next year, possibly. It's a lot more real now. And, you know, this has a chance to really be a hot start, similar to what we have in the Bridge District, that the timing is right to try to get the Desi's down, to really kind of de-emphasize cars. And if there's a real possibility or likelihood of not only one transit, a streetcar line, but possibly two streetcar lines that come in this area. So, you know, the Desi's right. And that really, when you look at the riverfront, you're really only two blocks from the riverfront. Your block, well, the similar, same block as a transit. So this would be the prime land for capitalizing as much on the streetcar as any other portion of the district. So there's really a lot of potential here, a lot of potential to really dense up and a lot of potential to have stops for the commercial, like commercial that we'll have on the base. So I think it's a good plan. I think that the traffic is right on, or the parking is right on, you're on top of that, and it looks good.
Mr. Kristof?
I take a little different approach, I guess. I think that there, with this project and the project that is underway at the foot of the Tower Bridge, I think there's a connectivity there. I realize that in between that, there's Railies corporate headquarters. But I think it's important that West Capitol Avenue is contiguous all the way from, I mean, I hate to see some kind of a cul-de-sac or something and block it off. But I think that West Capitol Avenue needs to, to go all the way to Tower Bridge, go all the way to the, to the Ziggurat and the roads up there. As far as parking, I think that we need to make sure that we have adequate parking. Because, first of all, we've got to sell the project. And we have to be realistic. If you do not have project, enough parking, people won't move there. They won't live there. They're gonna take their car. Regardless of what anybody says, they're gonna take their car. There may be a few people that want to walk, or a few people may want to ride a trolley system or something like that. But people like the flexibility of having a car. And so, I mean, I think that you need to put adequate parking in place for whatever the numbers show. I mean, we've, we've done the numbers on projects this size and, and, you know, Farr and Paris has done the traffic analysis and things like that. And I think that we can, we can come to terms with what the parking actually ought to be. And, because I know that, I can tell you right now, when we put in the library and we had this college across the way, City Hall over here, we had a mess. I mean, it was just a mess. It has gotten better, but we've had to expand and move out the parking in order to make it better. It just, it wasn't, we didn't really think it through. And I think that if there is a retail component in this particular development, which may be, maybe not, but if there is a retail, retail has to have parking. You can't go to a store and not have a parking lot. You've got to have it. So, I mean, I think that, you know, there, it really needs to be thought through. And I realize everybody on this council really wants to reduce all of that. But we have to make sure that we, from my opinion, we have to make sure that we make it as convenient and as comfortable for not only residents, but shoppers as well.
I think that's kind of what the, we're trying to address, kind of walk a line with providing a maximum. We are saying that there is up to a limit of parking that can be provided.
Right, I saw that. And you have a parking garage. That's our, our strategy to get to this has been the structured parking. And I live in, and there's, it's like this, and it's overparked. We have too much parking. And, I mean, in part, because the same issue came up. And the council insisted on allowing more parking, and now there's, there's too much. And we have all this guest parking and it's being filled up by residents because it's there. Not because they need it, not because any of us need it, because it's there. If it weren't there, then most, then people would do what they said they'd want to do when they moved in. They'd have one car for the same reason. Most folks aren't willing to give up their car entirely, but they'd have one. And now we've got folks who have two or three who are living in, you know, these little lofts. Just because the parking is there, the amount of demand will grow to satisfy the amount of free parking that is available. And that's all we have to manage. So I think the plan has it right. I was simply pushing back on the commission comments that, no, 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 you need to dial it back up because you really do destroy the whole reason for creating that kind of a place. I mean, there's a, I mean, there's, the kind of parking I've heard of the Southport Town Center, which we expect most people are gonna drive to, the vast majority are gonna drive to. So we create enough parking for everybody to park there. And in fact, it's so much parking that people drive from one end of the parking lot to the other, to go from Starbucks to the Nugget, Nugget to the Target, what have you. So that's that kind of place. But that, but for that reason, it can't ever, and it won't ever be the same sort of like mid-town style, walkable, restaurant-oriented, it can't support that as a result. And those are the choice, those are the trade-offs that have to be made. You cannot have simultaneously massive amounts of parking and that kind of place. And our commitment in West Sacramento is to have both places. Rather than try to make everything, all things to all people, let's try to have some really great places that are easily, you know, you can park at at any moment and have some other places that are transit-oriented, different kinds of places for different people, different kinds of times of their life, all of that. And this is, this is a particular, this area is a particular niche in that. So I'm not trying to reduce the parking anymore that was in the plan, not by any means, but simply to say, I think the direction that staff has been, and the consultant have been on through this process is, you know, hit on the right basic solution. And that the parking structure is a critical part of making that work for the whole downtown and the adjacent districts. Oh, sorry, Mr. Viegas.
That's right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, it's all been said, I agree with it. I did want to just mention, I did get an opportunity to sit down on a presentation on the form-based codes in Hercules. I thought it was fascinating stuff that they've done. Albeit, they're midway through it, so it's always nice to be able to see it at the tail end or at the back end to see kind of how it worked. But they're sort of going through the iterations of trying to make that work right now, so it is interesting to watch. I like the idea of sort of drilling down. I mean, I think this, this project, this sort of gateway-specific plan sort of drills down. We all want transit, pedestrian-oriented, urbanized living on our riverfront. We've kind of said that repeatedly. But I think this sort of drills it down a bit further to that next level, specific to this area. It's too bad it's not broader, but it is what it is. To give somebody who does come forward to say, we want to be a part of this district, some framework or some reference to sort of start with to say, here's what we, you know, here's what the council expects, what our city has said we want. Albeit, and it makes it pretty clear in here, this isn't exactly, these pictures aren't exactly, but it gives you at least a flavor for kind of where we're headed with it. I think it makes a lot of sense. It's good work. I mean, for the amount of money, it's pretty good work to give somebody, and I think folks coming forward who want to work with us, they want to know kind of what the game rules are upfront, and this certainly sets the groundwork out for that. So it's good work. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Hamilton, Mr. Tolda, do you have sufficient direction? All right, thank you. Then Item 13 has been continued to April 10th. Item 14 is the Second Workshop on the Proposed Riverfront Hotel Conference Center Project. Just a reminder, because there are some folks here for whom this is their first West Sacramento City Council meeting, that we take the request-to-speak cards up until the conclusion of the staff report. So if you already know you want to speak on this item, as a member of the public, one, we have a three-minute rule. Two, we have a no boo and applause rule. And three, we have a rule about turning the cards in before the end of the staff report. So if you already know you want to speak, I might grab one of the cards and turn it into the city clerk now. All right. But unless you're staff, you should come up now. Give your presentation. You want point, Mr. Melborg?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, we have a Second Workshop on the Proposed Riverfront Hotel and Conference Center Project. As you know, on March 6th, we had a presentation on the public, publicly financed portion of the project, the conference center. Tonight, we're proposing to come back to you with a presentation of the developer team. And, and so, in addition to having the development team here tonight, I just point out that we did have a section of the staff report that tried to address some of the questions you raised on March 6th about the economic impact of the project. We won't go into those now. If you have questions later, we can certainly answer them. But since the development team here tonight is pretty large, rather than have staff try to introduce everybody, we're gonna hand it off to Tony Gianoni of Christopher Company, who is going to start the presentation and introduce the development team.
I'm awfully glad about the no boo policy. That's comforting. Mayor and members of the city council, I am Tony Gianoni, a member of the development team. And even though we have a question period set up at the end of our presentation, if you have questions during the presentation, please feel free to interrupt any of us while we do this. For those of you that are unfamiliar with me or my career, I've been developing office buildings and hotels in the Sacramento and the Thomas region for the last 30 years. During that 30-year period, I have watched West Sacramento become a real economic force in our region. I've also seen a growing cooperation between the City of Sacramento and West Sacramento. Rayleigh Field, the proposed connecting bridges, the all-important streetcar system will truly connect downtown Sacramento with the Bridge District. I'm pleased to see that both cities are now looking at, both of our cities as a region as opposed to independent cities. That's very important as we continue to try to bring companies here for conventions and conferences from San Jose, Long Beach, and all of the other competing cities that kind of work against us, actually. With that in mind, I've watched West Sacramento focus on its waterfront. And I've seen it boldly invest in the infrastructure needed to develop that waterfront. Waterfront development has long been anticipated and is important for both the city and for the region since it will create new energy for visitors and for businesses alike as they come to our region as their destination. I've also watched over the years as this city has tried to come up with an iconic project to really get the Bridge District going. That project always seems to be a conference center hotel. When that, when the opportunity for the development of that type of a project presented itself, I quickly realized that it's a much larger project than one local developer could possibly handle. So as a consequence, I began looking at the possibility of putting together a national and international team that would assist in completing this project. I believe we've assembled such a team... I believe we've assembled such a team, and I'm pleased to introduce all of them to you. My first order of business was to assemble the basic development team, that is firms that had experience in public-private development. These firms are Garfield Traub and Encore Garfield Public Private LLC. From Encore Garfield Public Private, we have Ray Garfield, who is the president of that entity, and Steve Moffett, who is the executive vice president. Steve will be the lead member of our team throughout this project to conclusion. Also here tonight from Garfield Traub is Tony Traub, president of that organization. Both of these firms have long histories in public-private development and will be able to guide this project through to its completion. I also quickly realized that I needed some assistance in the local items that come up in a project this size. I therefore asked Brian Larson of Halo Hospitality to become part of the team and work with me on the local issues. Brian also brings long experience in the hospitality industry and will be able to assist us with operational issues. The next selection that we had to make was with an architectural firm. This was an important choice. We wanted an architectural firm with international credentials, one that could really give us an iconic project for this waterfront location. The selected firm is Hornberger and Wurstel. Their experience level in both the western United States and in the far east is without parallel, and I'm pleased to say that I've worked with this firm on previous successful projects. In previous materials that have been submitted to the city, examples of their work have been included. Tonight, we have with us Mark Hornberger and Ko Chow from that firm. Next on the list was a construction company, and you've worked with this firm before. Hensel Phelps was selected as our work, to work with our team, and not only to construct the project, but to come up with budgets that we could and the city could rely upon. From Hensel Phelps tonight is Shannon Gustine. In a project like this, equity participation is always a difficult hurdle to cross, especially before you have an approved project. Fortunately for us, the firm of Encore Enterprises saw the possibility and value of this project and has committed the necessary equity funding to move this project forward. Glenn Peterson of Encore is here this evening. Finally, a flag for the hotel became an important consideration. Marriott's been selected as our first choice for the flag. Chris Rose from Marriott is here tonight. Negotiations with Marriott are ongoing. However, it is unlikely that any final agreement with Marriott will be reached before we have a project agreement with the city. While we're discussing the flag and operation, I want to talk about something that was brought up at the March 6 workshop, that is the issue of labor peace. First, regarding construction. Hensel Phelps is a signatory contract, so labor peace should not be an issue with regard to the construction of this project. Regarding hotel operations, since all employees at the hotel will be employees of the operator, most likely Marriott, it will be the operator that will enter into the labor agreement with its employees. That said, our team and the hotel ownership group are open and sensitive to discussions regarding a fair and equitable labor arrangement with our local unions. In fact, Marriott has already requested a draft neutrality agreement, so hopefully the local labor unions understand that we're serious about sitting with them and talking this out. And then, final, last but not least, standard parking. A garage component of this project will be managed by standard parking, and that's the last of the groups, the last of our team members. So that constitutes the entire team. You'll be hearing from some of them as we go through this presentation, but for now, I believe that that is everyone. The next thing I want to just bring to your attention is the status of our land acquisition. The first order of business for our team, once it was assembled, was to work with the city to select the best site for the project, as well as the best site that would create development energy on the waterfront. We saw and looked at various sites, some that you've looked at before, some new ones, and the city and our team agreed that the Unger waterfront property was the number-one site for accomplishing our goals. I'm pleased to say that I knew Dean Unger, one of Sacramento's leading architects. Dean clearly had a vision of what the West Sacramento waterfront could be, and I'm truly honored to be able to assist in the next step in his vision. The Unger family has been extremely cooperative in working with us to complete the land transaction. And you'll note from the slide that the land in question here is roughly a two-and-three-quarter acre site that has three components. The hotel component that will be purchased and owned by the hotel owner, the conference center that will be purchased and owned by the city, and the garage that's being donated by the Unger family for, to the hotel owner for construction of the parking garage. So that's two-and-three-quarters acres total, and you'll see when we get into the site design and the site plan that it fits quite nicely. The current status of the negotiations on the land is that a binding letter of intent, binding with regard to the business terms, has been signed by all parties. A draft of the option agreement has been prepared by the attorneys for the Unger family. They've presented that document to us. Our attorney has reviewed that document, he's prepared comments, and those will now be transmitted back to the Unger family. We hope to have a fully executed option purchase agreement by the end of the month. Next, now with regard to the design of the project, unless you have any questions on the land acquisition. With regard to the design of the project, I'd like to turn this over to Mark Hornberger, who will take you through a brief overview of the conceptual designs.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Mark Hornberger, for the record. Thank you for the opportunity to present our design. What a wonderful opportunity. We've looked carefully, working with city staff, understanding the architectural guidelines of the Bridge District on which you have worked for an extended period of time, trying to have our design address key tenants of those guidelines, including activating street fronts, activating the riverfront, reemphasizing connections with the river, activating the pedestrian realm, creating street fronts that hide parking and emphasize retail, restaurant, food and beverage, meeting venues. And we think that the master plan for the site and the specific design carefully addresses those and brings those in the solution to the forefront. If I could have the next slide, please. So in the site plan that you have in front of you, you can see the various different components of the project. Mr. Gianoni referred to the three elements. The hotel tower, a 20-story iconic tower at the north end of the site, visible at the gateway as you come in. Our guestrooms are a check-in area right at this confluence of the Esplanade along the river and Ballpark Drive, and we're creating an important public outdoor space in front of the hotel tower and an arrival space, and it's a mixed space which will accommodate bicycles, linkage of bicycles coming into the Bridge District, pedestrians along the Esplanade, and then coming down to the river along the Ballpark Drive. In the middle of the site, you see in the polygonal shape the conference center itself. We'll talk a little bit about some of the unique aspects of the conference center, but I'd like to say, and I'm pleased to say, that one of the exciting things about this design, it'll have probably the most unusual ballroom and junior ballroom spaces, certainly in West Sacramento, but in the greater Sacramento area, in that it has both of those spaces, magnificent windows onto the river with views to the east towards the downtown, the river, the river environment, the Crocker Gallery across the river. So it will be a sought-out destination in this community because of the quality, light-filled quality of those spaces. And then on the left-hand side, you see the parking structure, 494 cars on four suspended levels surrounded by new urbanist-planned housing, so that you don't see the parking structure, you see housing. But we have access to parking from both sides. The parking is directly connected to the conference center and hotel, so that public may arrive, park, walk directly into the conference center for those uses. Next slide, please. In section, you can see here a north-south section which runs parallel to the river, the hotel tower, the important public ground-level spaces. On the right-hand side, Port Coucher and Arrival, our lobby, great room, restaurant and food and beverage spaces. Then behind them, junior ballroom, the ballroom and other meeting spaces stacked above it, rooftop swimming pool and event area. And then at the left-hand side, the parking structure, which is in the center portion of the site. Next, please. Section in the other direction through the parking structure, you can see how it's enveloped by housing here, so instead of having a parking structure which defines our streets and riverfront, we have housing and the conference center which defines those key public spaces. Next, please. And then the key section through the ballroom, junior ballroom, the conference center. So here, you can see in the tan color, the main 12,000-square-foot ballroom, which will be the largest ballroom in the greater Sacramento area in a hotel, and its windows directly out onto the river. You'll approach this across a public plaza on the left-hand side, entering through a lobby and pre-function area, up an escalator to the ballroom, and then on the ground level below the ballroom, junior ballroom of 4,000 feet with outdoor breakout terrace, so that functions can be out on the terrace next to the Esplanade looking over the river. So indoor, outdoor. Next, please. Elevations of the building, high-quality architecture. We understand from your guidelines and aspirations for the level of quality for the Bridge District, the desirability of bringing high-quality materials, precast, stone, metal, curtain wall, and glazing, but a variety of fenestration shapes, sizes, in order to give interest to the composition, interest to the tower, but quality and permanence at the same time. Next, please. This is the view from across Ballpark Drive of the Port Coucher, ground-level restaurants and bar spaces, the guestroom tower with special guestrooms articulated in the tower as they view up towards the bridge and the downtown area of Sacramento. Next, please. And then finally, probably one of the most important views for us is this activation of the public realm. This is the intersection of the Esplanade, of Ballpark, our Port Coucher and Arrival area with this public plaza, outdoor dining, outdoor entries to our restaurant, great room, bar, and food service areas. So we're embracing the public realm, embracing the pedestrian and bicycle realm, and having this interaction between our indoor spaces and those outdoor spaces. So we're proud to bring this to you, happy to take any questions.
Just, can you remind me the, we've got the, are there two entrances at the ground level?
Yes, if you go back, if you would go back to the site plan, I can point these out.
Yeah, wait at the beginning, there are two loops.
Second, second one, I apologize. So we have, yes, next one, please. Yes, there. So the oval-shaped area that you see at the intersection of Riverfront and Ballpark, that's the drop-off area for the conference facility. That accesses not only the entry space and pre-function for the conference center, but also you get into the garage. You can come, loop in, drop off, get directly into the garage, come into the garage, drive out, pick up someone and leave. We're also creating, just above that, between the baseball field and the conference center, a public plaza on that corner. So we're defining with a architectural loggia that corner, the street front, having a series of archways through it, paving it and landscaping it, so that important corner is defined as part of the public realm as you approach the intersection and then see the conference center. Retail lines, Riverfront, so that bar of housing which is at the top has retail at the ground level facing the street. And then, the other important outdoor entry area, of course, is to the north and northeast facing the intersection of the waterfront Esplanade, that triangular area where you drive in, signage will help you find that location, drop off your luggage and drop off for the restaurant and whatnot at the hotel. So if we intentionally done, if we have a big event in the conference area, a social event, we are allowing people to check in in the hotel and not get confused with and intermingled with large groups happening in the conference center. So two entries, absolutely.
All right, I mean, the reason, this has been a small but important theme throughout the design processes, is that entryway to the waterfront from Riverfront Drive, and it has to be sustained, so making, and you partly accomplish that by diverting the conference center entryway to the side, so you don't have cars that are waiting, that are queuing up to get in there, blocking off all of that road. But I do think that remains important, and so, you know, not having a gigantic queue of taxis or people who are parking for 20 minutes while checking in and then coming back out. We don't, I think we want to be careful not to have a principal visual, the main gateway between the ballpark's entrance and the water, the actual riverfront amenities, to be on a heavily, you know, to be a heavily congested area. I think you've tried to deal with that from a design perspective, and you need to make sure we continue that emphasis, both in design and in the way that we manage and operate.
Understand, yes.
And at the end, so then at the end, these are plantings?
These are actually a combination of paving and planting, and it's been set up so that you can have bicycle access, pedestrian access. We also need a fire lane which accesses the promenade. So this is a graphic indication of something which creates a softer public realm, but has a combination of landscape, hardscape, and we'll be developing that in the schematic phase.
Mr. Viegas.
Sure, so on the same graphic, so you indicated, and the parking structure is surrounded by residential, the residential, so that wraps all the way around, including what fronts on the water side, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so there is no portion of the parking structure facing the water that it wraps all the way around?
No.
I thought that's what you said. Thank you.
I'll turn it back to Mr. Gianoni.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mark. We are, all I can say is we're really excited about this design, and we sincerely hope that you all are as well. But now it's time to talk about the meat of the project, and that is capitalization and funding. So I will turn this part of it over to Steve Moffett and Ray Garfield. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, my name is Steve Moffett, I'm with Encore Garfield, my partner Ray Garfield. We're going to talk about the, what all that's going to cost, and then how we're going to pay for it in the project budget and the capital plan. This is a preliminary project budget. We're early in the process, but I will say it's been a very well-thought-out and very well-founded project budget. We're blessed to have a design-build team and an architect who have both designed and built many, many hotels. We have developed many hotels. So we based this budget on, first, a good set of concept drawings, which you just saw, several of from, presented by Mark Hornberger, and in our concept design, I'm sorry.
You all are, you're all taller in Texas, so the microphone's not that close to your mouth?
I'm sorry.
There's a little button to your, on the podium there, if you press it, the whole thing will rise.
Oh, clever boys. Nicely done, guys. Is that better?
That's way, much better.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
The budget is very well-founded, very well-thought-out. We've got a We've got a, although it is a preliminary budget, it was based on a set of concept plans and what we call a concept design program, and that includes not only the drawings that you saw, the site plan, the various levels of drawings, but also a preliminary, a preliminary building program which estimates the total square footage in the building of all the, the public spaces, the hotel rooms, the back-of-house spaces, the total square footage in the building, as well as a set of design narratives created by the architect for the, the design features in the building, including the skin on the building, and also narratives from our structural engineers and our electrical engineers, et cetera. So all of that information was given to, to our contractor, Hensel Phelps, in developing the, the construction cost part of the budget, which was designated here by hard construction. I will note that because we are anticipating a design-build delivery of this building, that the architectural and engineering fees, while many times would be included below construction in the soft costs, those design and engineering fees are included in the hard costs in a design-build program. So the, and the land represented, and this is the actual contracted amount with the Unger family for the hotel and the conference center partial on the land. So the budget, although it is preliminary, has been very well-thought-out, and we feel very confident that this is a reasonable budget for this project. Next slide, please. I'm going to let Ray Garfield talk initially about the capitalization, and then I'll come back in, in a minute.
Of course, I am Ray Garfield, and from Dallas, thanks, it's great to be back here. Nothing happens without capital. And this is a depiction of our capital plan as we see it today. And it is comprised of approximately 80% debt and equity, 25% equity, cash investment by Encore Hospitality, the land equity that is going to be contributed for the, the parking garage itself, about $25 million of targeted EB5 preferred equity that will come into the project, and investment of $3 million in key money by Marriott itself. So the total equity of about $34 million targeted is around 25% of the project. And then, of course, the private owners have to go to consortium of banks to bring in the construction loan, and after the construction is completed, it stays on for a few years, so it's called a mini-per, mini-permanent loan. And that is targeted between 50 and 55% of the total cost of the project. And, and anecdotally, that's about where major banks are looking to loan on full-service first-class conference center hotels these days. Not, not a great amount as prior to the recession, so targeting the 50, 52, 55% loan-to-cost, we, we are very confident of. That left a gap of about $30 million, and we've done public-private projects across the nation for the last 20-plus years. In this case, the, the gap amount was approximately $30 million, the investment asked for by the city. With that, the city would own the, the conference facility, and, and, and those funds are capable of designing, building and opening, and setting up reserves to operate this hotel. Steve? Well, that's right, this, this is just a slide, the second, this next slide is simply a recapitalization of what I've described. Cash equity, land equity, EB5 preferred equity and key money comprise the equity portions of the project.
Next slide, please. The debt, private debt. Every public-private partnership has a debt component to it, and in, in every series of years, the debt portion that's available from the private sector changes through, through various economic cycles. We stay very close to lenders throughout the country because we do develop all across the, across the country. And so the first thing that I do when I'm putting together the capitalization of a project is, is we will look at the amount of private debt that's available for the project. And so this is, the number on the private slide was $68 million from, from, in a senior, a senior loan construction and mini-perm financing for the project. And that is a large number, so in this case, we deal with large banks. We're, we're in preliminary discussions with, with several lenders that are larger regional banks and national banks. We feel like that our 52% loan-to-cost in this project is a very favorable number to deal with. We're, we're confident that, that that lead bank, which will be a national bank, will be capable of taking, taking the, the lion's share of the loan, but will also syndicate it. So we're in discussion with some local lenders who would likely be a party to a syndication with a larger national lender. So the one national lender, one bank is not going to take all $68 million of our projected loan. It will more than likely be four or five lenders, probably two or three or more, of which will be local banks. The timing of this, the funding on our, on our debt piece is that we, we will, by, by the time we're ready to start into the schematic design phase of the project and our, our pre-construction phase, we will have a letter of intent from, from a lender. Lenders don't like to give commitment letters more than six months out, typically three to six months, so since our, our design phase takes 12 months, we will likely have a letter of intent, and we will follow that up approximately six months prior to start of construction with a firm commitment letter from that bank, so that by the time we're ready to start construction, all of the components of the capital stack are firmly in place. The, the capitalization piece of the city, I'll just mention real quickly because this was discussed in, in the March 6 meeting at depth, but I think it is important to note that the city is currently considering two options. One, issuing bonds at the start of construction of the conference center or at the completion of construction of the conference center. And both are viable alternatives, and there are many issues that the staff is, is considering before making the final decision. Really important part of this, though, is that actually all, I, I think that project-specific, all of those items listed there are under the bond-supported transient occupancy, property tax, surcharge and conference center lease, those are all project-specific, not just the, the property tax. Those are all project-specific revenues. And the projection right now is that, that those, the revenues generated from those sources are, are much more than enough to support the, the payment of the debt service on the bonds. And the parking garage, of course, is a different, it's, it's a, a different component of capitalization. I believe it's actually a cash component during construction because the city is actually purchasing some, some public parking spaces in the garage. Next slide, please. The project schedule. We talk about pre-construction. The pre-construction or design period of the project is about 12 months long, and it's broken up into the pieces we designated there. We, if we start, if we're able to start that in May of 2013, and the starting point is actually a project development agreement, which we, we're, we will be negotiating very immediately, we'll start negotiating, discussing with the city. If we can complete that in May, then we would start, launch into a schematic design phase. And then, and by the way, at the end of each one of these phases, we do revisit our budget and make sure that we're on target with our budget. Mark alluded to the schematic design phase. It's very important that at the end of that phase, where we've more fully defined the foundation of the, of the, the project and the budget related to the foundation, we can revisit the budget, make sure we're on track, and we will do the same thing at the end of the design document period. And then construction documents, those are the actual drawings that, that the contractor will use to build the building. During that construction document process, we will actually get a guaranteed maximum price contract from our general contractor. Construction start, we'll be out here with our golden shovels July of 2014, and we'll be walking into the hotel in September of 2016 if we, if we can get this process started in May of this year. I believe that is the end. We're now open for public discussion, Tony?
Can I lower this thing? I'm not from Texas. You've been given quite a bit of information this evening, and of course, it may take some time to digest all of that, but hopefully you've got some questions for our crew and more than happy to answer them now.
All right, so, and the council, I mean, this is not the first exposure for the council, so we're not digesting this for the first time.
Okay.
This evening. An extensive amount of analysis has been done. This is the council's second public workshop on the project, but in, both individually and in land negotiation briefings in closed session. And of course, the intense and extensive involvement of a broad range of our staff, from finance to planning to infrastructure to public works, everyone on our team has been deeply engaged in this project through various phases. This is the simplest, Texas seems like far away, but compared to the Korean Pension Fund that was a prior partner, and the Bank of China, and some folks from Australia, this is, it's like folks next door are partners this, this time around. But a tremendous amount of analysis and work on this has, has preceded last, our last workshop and this one, because we, we have a lot of experience delivering large projects, and also in large projects not happening, and so we want to make sure that we're, that we do so in a way that will maximize the likelihood of success and the impact of the projects, and also, and a, a critical priority for the city is, is doing so in a way that creates no exposure for the core services that we provide in the community, that our number-one job, a critical job of the city is economic development, activating the waterfront, a variety of other improvements in the community. That's one of the, that's, those are some of the major reasons that we incorporated. But none of that can ever happen to the detriment of our ability to have a police officer show up, or the fire get put out, or the toilet flush, or some of the basic essentials that are, that are critical to the city. And so a, a defining criteria, as we've done all the work, has been how to design a project like this post-redevelopment, when one of our major tools has been taken away from us, that would allow us to be an investment partner without having the city put its, its resource, its basic resources at risk, its regular tax resources at risk. And, and I think that's, for me, that's, that's the most important part of the financial structure of this package, that, that's what's accomplished here, is that what is being committed to the project is future revenues, and those, but those, as we're emphasizing in the presentation, those are revenues specifically associated with the project. And so obviously, some of the first questions I got was, hey, you've got $30 million to put into a hotel? Why can't you put it in, why can't you buy this or build this? And the answer is, we don't have $30 million. It's just, you know, what we're doing is the same thing that you're doing when, when you go to college, you know, you're, you're doing this on the expectation, on the knowledge that that is going to increase your future income, take out a student loan to do that, and then when that, when you, when your income improves, you, you pay that back, or in any other kind of investment. And so the revenues that are associated with this, that we're, that we're dedicating to the bond financing of this conference center project as part of the hotel, are, as has been said, specifically those revenues associated and created, generated by the project that would not exist if we, if we didn't move forward. So we wouldn't have an increase, we wouldn't have that transient occupancy tax, that hotel tax revenue wouldn't be here without the hotel, the property tax wouldn't change without the project, and so on and so forth down the line. So there's no, there's no diversion of any funds that we could have otherwise spent for police, fire, parks, public works or other essential city services in order to make that happen. Having said that, the benefit, the potential benefit, if we're able to bring this project to reality with all of the partners, for the community and for other investors in the city is enormous. I mean, I think the excitement that's already, we're already seeing around the community and around the region for the project is not surprising, but it's enormous. A project like this, you can grab somebody in Galt, or in Southport, or in Roseville, or in Bright, and ask them, you mention the word river for a second, and they will instantly pop at you. Why don't we, why don't we, why doesn't somebody use those rivers? We've got these great rivers here, and nobody, and we, we're doing nothing with them. What's wrong with you politicians? Well, this is the kind of project that, that changes the game and takes back the waterfront for the public and makes it an asset for all of, for all of us in our community and region-wide, that makes the rest of the investments that are being made work better. You know, I want to see more restaurants and galleries and shops and parks and activities and events on the waterfront. Those sorts of things happen only when you've got people living there who are, who are going to the restaurant, you know, in the evening, on the weekends, and people who work there because their offices are there going during lunch, and people who are going to the baseball games, or going to a wedding, or going to a conference. It takes all of those pieces together. There's no one-tipper, but this is a critical part of that equation. And the partnership with the Ungers and other property owners in the district to advance the work that they've already been doing over the last several years with us on the Bridge District, I think is really encouraging as well. So we're going to have an extensive, you know, an additional extensive conversation tonight, but I just, I think those two, you know, the marriage of both, a, a significant amenity and leap forward for the community and for the waterfront with a really smart financing plan, with, with the right set of partners who know, who have done this sort of work, know how to do it, are low drama, speak the same language, is, and within the boundaries of the kind of financial principles that have made West Sacramento successful but prudent are, are, are important as, as we go forward. So thanks to the, to the team and our staff as we begin the conversation about this as well. So let me first ask if there are questions of the team or of staff. We do have one request to speak on the item as well. Mr. Viegas.
Yeah, just, just maybe an architectural question. In terms of the, the building itself, in the evenings, I know one of the things we're very proud of and we're able to showcase whenever there's a major event in the region is the ziggurat, as it lights up. It has that sort of, you know, beautiful evening effect, and I'm just wondering if you can speak at all about what we can expect as the signature building coming off the waterfront in the evenings, and what, what would that look like to, to, to folks?
Councilman, excellent question, thank you. Certainly, there will be an extension of the ground level, pedestrian lighting, warm, inviting, residential in quality. But we're also planning at the top of the building, signature lighting, which will emphasize the tower tasteful way, but helps signal this as the anchor building in the Bridge District. So we'll be doing simulations during the design phase of that, nighttime lighting, as well as more renderings of the building, so we look forward to sharing those with you.
See, tasteful, have you, have you seen our ziggurat?
Council silhouette. I won't answer that.
All right, we do have one request to speak on the item, so we're going to turn to public comment. Thanks for, Mr. Loel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, William Loel, West Sacramento, for the record. I don't think I've mentioned this before, but I may have, but I'm still, still concerned. It seemed to me like our soil on this side of the river is fairly sandy and pretty soft by comparison to the, that on the other side of the river. And it just doesn't seem to me like it will be strong enough for that high of a building as opposed to the ziggurat building. And, and, let's see, local TV channel and Sacramento Bee, I believe, mentioned that you were going to be approached to, to help out in a financial way. Well, I don't know. I think after the governor decided to take away our redevelopment agencies, why, I think we have to start thinking in a little different terms, especially when it involves big development, redevelopment of land that gets rezoned and becomes worth so much more money. As one of the developers suggested to me over a year ago, he says, we wouldn't have any problem financing the Southport-South Sacramento Bridge, just add on 15 grand to each new house that's sold from here on out. So I say this is the time to apply that same logic to new development, and if you do get that SAICOG grant money, why, don't call it redevelopment, but gotta call it something else, but maintain a, a continuous flow of money in that so that after you get a certain amount of development, why, over here, why, then you'll have enough to build a Southport-South Sacramento Bridge and just continue it on like that. And there ought to be something in there to prevent those affected from just selling the plain land at a big price without them participating in the infrastructure costs that are going to be provided. I mean, they're still making plenty of money, so I think you should consider that, as well as the safety factor that I say, let's compare the sandy soil with a hard pan, and we might have to design it a little differently, not, not totally like the ziggurat, but more of a base. So, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Loel. I do recall after the ziggurat was built, I, I made a public amendment that we would not be building a whole riverfront full of them, but, I mean, I, I think, to all levity aside, though, the magnitude of this project, but really any project, even if a local florist was building a one-room office on, on, in the Bridge District, the soil analysis is one of the first things that gets done. So we, I, I promise you, we, nobody will issue any bonds or spend millions of dollars on construction without first examining in great detail the quality and nature to great depths of what the soil is at that location. We have several local soils firms that can help with that, with that work, so. All right, so that's all the, the public requests we had to speak on this item, so I'm... had to speak on this item. So Mayor Proton LaDesma?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thanks to the development team for showing up en masse tonight. And I guess Texas does everything big, because you guys all show up big tonight. But I appreciate you coming out and spending time as you have in the past weeks and maybe months with our staff. I want to thank staff for all the work that they've done. I, I just have a couple of comments and that will probably lead to a couple of questions. But generally, I do want to say that, that the project is, for me, very exciting to be looking at. I have, I wasn't on the council, while I was to a degree, when we had one project or another team come through, when it just didn't turn out to be much of anything. But, but I, I'm excited by it. It's, it is, to me, a solid plan. I do have some questions on it, but I am excited about it. It's generated excitement in, in, within my neighborhood and within the city and even in the region. I crossed upon a council member from across the river who was as excited about this as, as I was because of the potential it had for our region. So, and with everything else we have going on on the riverfront, and we are actively talking about streetcars, as you heard earlier tonight, there is actual action looking at future bridges within our community and the Sacramento side. They have some fairly low-key negotiations going on over at the downtown plaza. So again, it just is creating, something that's occurring within our region and along the waterfront that, as the mayor pointed out, for a long time stood just waiting for potential. So I'm looking forward to continuing and working on this. And, and one piece that came up, actually, Mr. Lowell, I'm glad you sort of brought it up and it came up as well from the mayor, which is the, kind of the financing piece, which everyone in this room knows I would zero in on a little bit. But, you know, a year ago, we talked about what post-redevelopment would look like and what financing, economic development would look like. And we continue to work on it. We have a terrific staff that continues to work on it. It's an evolving question. And, and when we put together a task force on it before it was even killed, we started to look at it. We had some finance, financing mechanisms and instruments we were looking at. And one of them is, is included in your package, which is EB5, the EB5 program. So I guess what occurred to me is, as I was listening to you folks tonight, was it was always anticipated that the city would be the creative one and cities would be creative in how they would finance these economic development projects going forward. But really, the partnership that's been shown, because you showed a lot of creativity in coming up with not just EB5 money, but also in, in bringing in outside equity investors and then as well as looking at other mechanisms to do that, it really is turned out to be a creative project that we probably couldn't have, have a blueprint from, for two years ago, but we do today. But I'm hoping one of you, I'm not sure whom, would stand up. I just had a couple of quick questions on, just on the EB5 piece, because we really haven't, haven't seen it. And maybe can, can expand upon it a little bit. I know that there was, again, we haven't seen it, I think, much in the region and maybe you can expand upon it to maybe in the region or your experience with it.
Happy to do that. Let me get this up here. EB5 is a program that has been around nationally since the early 1990s. The Immigration Service, USCIS, passed legislation in the early 1990s to allow foreign investors to invest in job-creating developments and, and earn a green card for that. We're advantaged here because Yolo County happens to be designated as a TEA or a Targeted Employment Area. So the, that distinction is important because there are a number of investments searching for money around the world to bring to the U.S. for developments that will create jobs. And there are really two, two types under the legislation. One that, for a million dollars per investor, and that would be in a non-targeted employment area. And target employment area for everyone, one here is really designated and defined by Immigration Service legislation. That would be a county that, whose unemployment is 50% greater than the national average and, or a rural area. And Yolo County was, granted that distinction a couple of years ago. So we have a regional center, approved regional center to allow the marketing of this. We have the county, which is designated as a TEA, which means that we can look for $500,000 investors instead of a million-dollar investors. If you don't have a TEA, it's a million. If you do have a targeted employment area, it's $500,000. Makes it much more marketable worldwide because the advantage for the investors that come in through the EB5 program is that they receive a green card for themselves and their families. Their children can study here in the United States, they can move here once the jobs are created. So they also want to see who the sponsors are. We don't use EB5 in every deal by a long shot, but here we've always believed that there are certain just premier aspects to this. State Capitol of California, Marriott is a brand that's going to invest in and operate this, a community that's going to make an investment in this, in this property. It, it, it is a signature property. So, and then you need to also find an organization that has experience and capability in bringing money in and closing transactions. And the regional center that we've chosen to work with us, that we're currently in deep negotiations with, is one of the most experienced regional centers in the nation, having closed over $650 million worth of EB5 transactions. They have funds in escrow that, that aren't invested already so that they can, they can invest very quickly. We have targeted $25 million of EB5 Preferred Equity coming into the capital stack, as you recall, in the, in, in this. This development, by all accounts, could actually qualify for twice that much, at least twice that much in, in investments. But, and I think it's important as well to note that on a national level, over the last 15 years, the average in public investment in these public-private hotels and conference centers has been around 40%. Here, the, the municipal investment is closer to 20%. And, and I think it's advantaged because of the ability to go out and get this lower cost, this is lower-cost equity as, as the investment in this development, EB5 funding is. We also have backup plans in case that EB5 number is not achieved through other discussions with Marriott and other investors that would bridge that gap if the EB5 raise doesn't achieve the minimum $25 million. Let me answer some specific questions.
Yeah, I was just, the, the other part was, I, I think you had, because I'd met with you previously individually, but you had said that there was a local project that was funded through EB5, and I'm trying to recall what it was.
Yeah, McClellan.
Nothing like what we're doing, though.
I know. We, the, again, the regional center that we're negotiating with is, is qualified for the entire state of California. They have closed amongst the 200, the $650 million in closings, the McClellan project here in Sacramento was one of those projects that they have closed. They've closed several projects in the state of California over the last few years.
I appreciate you giving me some more, giving the public and myself some more background on it, because it's just one of those things we're not experienced with. But I know it's been done before. And again, we were looking at that a year and a year and a half ago as we started exploring other options that might have been brought to the table to make these types of projects or other catalyst projects come forward. So I just want to make sure we had the opportunity to.
Okay.
I did also want to make a couple of quick items on the design, which was around, I, I did want to thank the design and it would ask, you keep, as Councilmember Villegas talked, talked about, is making sure we can accent the fact that we're on the river in the open space and articulate that. I think what I've saw so, so far on the conceptual drawings are exactly what at least I envisioned on that riverfront where everybody that is going to or, or to a conference or to a hotel room or, or where they're parking for that matter, they could have a great view of the river. And it would seem like a very public space. So that's one aspect. I did want to make sure that I highlighted. And if we can find other opportunities as we go through the project without too many change orders, that'd be great. So that's all I had. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Johansson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I like, I think the design is great as well. I like what you've done with the parking and the activation of the riverfront. I think that's, we've had a number of projects that have come through here, you know, over the years before the downturn and, and now. And we're all interested in fenestration and these types of issues. When you walk, you see something gets active, people moving in there, and it really creates an invitation. And I'm glad to see you're going to have amenities in the, the project as well, restaurants and hopefully, you know, pubs and it sounds like you've got a lot of the things going in there, which is, is just going to be another venue that not only folks from our side of the river will have to go, but folks from the other side of the river. But in terms of the, on the economics of it, you know, the city is basically going to be putting in 20%, I think, of this project. And just like the investors, the city also looks for, you know, you can't really consider it to be a rate of return, but it wants something for its money. And there's a discussion now across the river on the arena and what, what to do about that and really whether public money is, is appropriate or not for these things. But, you know, I, I think we're on the same page that, yeah, it is, in this case, we need to reduce our risk, our general fund and not have a police layoffs and things of that nature. But the kind of benefit that we receive from these projects, I'm really glad to see that you've shown some labor sensitivity and not only in the operation, but the construction, and hopefully that drills down to the subs as well. But, and also the local hire, because I think one of the ways, you know, outside of the TOT and some of the other direct economic benefit we get out of this, it's the creation of the jobs. And we're going to have, you know, 500 construction jobs here that are probably going to go on until 2016. And then over 300 operational jobs are going to go on for, and so, you know, we're going to have people that are going to be making money there. And we want people to have money to go spend in the community. At that time, we're probably going to have housing, so a lot of people living in that district. And they'll stay in there, they'll shop in there, they'll create more demand for retail, and it just, it will start escalating after that. And add the, the streetcar to the mix, it really is a catalyst. And you can see where that's going. So, you know, those are the things that we look at. We have to explain to our constituents, okay, we're putting 20% in this project, 23 million, or for the 28 million, and what are we getting in return for that? And so we need to be able to articulate. Staff has done a good job. It's starting to articulate that. But, you know, a lot of it does come down to jobs and, and having folks that can actually go out in the community and spend money and help support a lot of the other things we want to do. So I really appreciate those comments that you are sensitive to that and great project. I'm really looking forward to it.
Mr. Kristof.
Yeah, well, most, most everybody's covered everything. I mean, I want to echo Mark's comments on, on the labor component of this. I think it is very important. I think it'll benefit everybody. And I'm pretty excited. I'm, well, I've been on the council a couple of years and, and I'm pretty excited about finally having, you know, the kind of hotel and the kind of amenity that we wanted to have. I mean, I, when I first came on, I thought the Marine Inn was a big thing. But guess what? You know, and some people don't even know what it is, but that's okay. One of the questions I did have was, in one of the staff reports that I saw earlier, I think that your parking consultants thought that there should be another level. There should be five levels rather than four. And I just wonder if that's still the case or if that's something that's being looked at or, or what the issue was on that.
Katie's been working on that issue for, for quite a long time, but I will tell you that the design of the garage, the foundation structure for the garage will support another level.
Right.
It's just a matter of economics.
Okay.
And Katie, do you have anything to add?
The park, as you know, the, the parking structure is really a shared resource for the Bridge District as a whole. And that's, that's how we plan to create this transit orientation. At this point in time, the, the pro forma really governs how much, how much additional space is beyond the needs of the apartments, the hotel, the public, rally field events. That, we, we also plan, as you know, to augment with surface parking initially with the idea that over the long term, our plan will be to transition that surface parking to structure. At this point in time, really, the underlying economics are governing the number of levels.
And an additional level adds about 90 stalls, as I recall, about 90 stalls.
Okay, okay. I was, I just remember reading that and I just wondered what happened to it when you said four. Yeah, no, I'm pretty excited about the project. I, I think that if we can make it all work, this is going to be, it's going to be a signature project for West Sacramento. And we are a partner in this. We, there is a, there, there is truly a partnership in, in this arrangement. And one of the things that happened when we did baseball was, we didn't put some escalators in or some other kinds of things in place that when, when the upside really hit with baseball, we didn't have a way in which we could, not necessarily renegotiate an agreement, but at the same time, there wasn't a way that we could really benefit by the upside. And so I, I know that I'm going to ask my future, my fellow council members what, what they think, but one of the things I would like to do is I'd like to have some mechanism in place that allowed for the upside to really be recouped some way as far as the city and the, the development, because we do have an element of risk and we are partners. And so I was thinking, I was trying to think of a way to do it and I didn't, I couldn't think of ways to make it work. With baseball, it would have been attendance, but with this, it, we really couldn't do anything on the room rates because we have TOT. We'd have various propositions to have to go through to make some changes there. We had the 2%. And so I, I thought maybe one of the things we could do is if we could reach some threshold figures, like, oh, we'll say 65% or 60% of the rooms are rented, then a percentage or whatever it is could go into some kind of a city fund. Or we could generate additional dollars because it had been so successful. And then if it went to 65% rented, there could be an additional percentage point or something like that. And so, but I was just trying to find, figure out a way to, I was just really trying to find a way to, to make it work. And so I thought of the conference center. Well, they could add, we could add that, that money's into the conference center. So anyway, it was something that I just wanted to talk to the council about, talk to staff about and, and I don't really want to scare everybody, but at the same time, let you people know that, you know, I'm a pretty upfront guy and I'm going to look after the city. I've only been doing this for 25, 26 years. And so financially, I'm going to really take a close look if I can remember to do some of these things. So, anyway.
Mr. Villegas?
Yeah, thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I, I, it's, it's, it is exciting. I actually had the opportunity shortly after getting on the council 12 years ago to talk to Mr. Unger about his vision and sort of what he wanted and what he envisioned on this property, albeit we had, he had certainly a series of setbacks with the state and federal regulatory agencies because of the, the things that they didn't know they wanted, which prohibited him from being able to move forward on his project. But lo and behold, the family held firm and here we are. So, but what hasn't been mentioned is the fact that this is a partnership in large part because the city has invested tens of millions of dollars for the last 15 years to clean up the riverfront, to take down dilapidated buildings, to relocate buildings. I mean, there's a huge, huge investment. I mean, there's a huge, huge investment of tens of millions and millions of dollars that's gone into sort of teeing this up, if you will, to bring together, it sounds like a wonderful project team. I mean, I think you've got some, we've got some quality folks here that, I think this is exactly what we wanted. We wanted to tee it up and make strategic investments, so that we could bring and attract the quality product that I think we're going to get. And I think first and foremost for me, I think the protection of the general fund is what I think Bill alluded to, and I think we all sort of cherish those precious resources here locally, and I think what we've done, and staff has done, and what I think the partnership includes, is a protection of those funds. So I think that staff has done a wonderful job of laying that out. I would echo a little bit about what Bill said. I don't know what that looks like, but I think in terms of when the product does become, and I think it will become very successful, if there was some way to notch out a way to support additional public infrastructure, public amenities, to make the riverfront an even better place for that very next project that comes along, I'm certainly not opposed to that. I don't know what that looks like, and I don't know about talking about it, or trying to negotiate something up here at this point, but I do support the concept.
Well, I'm, I'm going to address this, Katie, actually. So, I mean, this is a project that is, in many ways, it looks alike many projects that we've done in the past, but in some significant ways is very different. And it is unlike Rayleigh Field and some of our other large projects, in that the upside is baked in, because this is not an old-style project, where a private developer comes forward, does a project, asks us for a subsidy, which we give them a subsidy, or we give them, we commit to them all of our revenues for time eternal, or for something close, and we do it because we want to see the project happen. And then we have a conversation about, well, what about the upside? And then somebody blinks, and the project doesn't happen, or it happens and we don't get the upside, either one. Right? That's the tradition, that has been the traditional model. That is not the case in this project. We're not committing these revenues to the private developer for time eternal. These are revenues associated with the project that are for the repayment of those bonds. Once the bonds are repaid, then those revenues accrue entirely to us, and they are directly related to how successful the project is. So if the project is selling out, and room rates are through the roof, then that will both generate massive amounts of transient occupancy taxes, and dramatically increase the property value of the location as well. So we will see direct upsides. Now, that is, once the bonds are paid off. Now, before the bonds are paid off, the modeling that we've done in this, in the financing plan for this project is extraordinarily conservative, because at the end, the backstop must be the general fund. That's just, and it has been on every project we've done, including Rayleigh Field. But none of us are prepared to ever get there. And so, our negotiations have been focused around, how do we create the lock boxes, the reserve funds, the everything, you know, the 16 contingency, so you never get to the general fund. You accomplish that by overfunding the bond payments, right? And so, to the extent that that occurs, that we're generating more revenue than is, from TOT, from the property tax increment, from the sales tax, from the 2%. To the extent we're generating more revenue than is necessary, even while the bond is being repaid for those annual bond payments, that's our money, right? It's not, it's not, I mean, it will go in the reserves first, and to fill those up, and once that's done, as it was done, like, within five minutes on Rayleigh Field, then it's our money. It's not, unlike the other arrangements, where the money was going directly to the project developers. And so I think the, we had, this approach builds in, it bakes in, in a very serious way, the notion that we, that we do definitely share in the upside, because this is not a project, a private development project that we are subsidizing. There's no subsidy here. You know, the sort of other side of the river approach of before, you've got a great project, here's 10 million bucks, we would like you to do, you know, a community benefit thing or something, we have, here's our six requests, here's $10 million. We never could do that, because we didn't have the money. And we still don't have the money post-redevelopment. So this is essentially, this is a true public-private partnership, where I think the staff report indicates that even with all these payments, that their estimate is that we'd have $49 million after making all the debt payments in direct revenues associated with doing this project. That's after the debt payments. We do this sort of project, even if we didn't want to activate, even if the waterfront wasn't a priority, even if creating a great space wasn't a big deal, even if supporting Rayleigh Field and supporting CalSTRS, which is begging for a hotel like this, if none of that mattered, just as a private, just as an investment for us, there's a lot of merit in the project. And that really is the nature of this public-private partnership, and the multi-dimensional private part of the partnership as well. And that depends on everybody winning, right? And so, again, sort of the old-style development notion, where the, you know, the private sector partner would, the private sector developer would be like, how can I squeeze as much subsidy out of the local government until they just can't take anymore, and they're about to walk away, but not quite that point? And then the city says, well, how do we just keep getting a better deal? How do we keep getting a better deal? This, our, we're doing this open books, you know, with all the partners, saying, how do we make this thing work? And who's benefiting? Who's going to, you know, who's making the appropriate investments to match the risks that they're taking, and the ultimate benefits that they will get? And that's how this project works. So it'll generate $175 million or so for us, and $125 million of debt payments over that whole time, or 100 million, or whatever. So we'll make money during the period, and then a lot after the debt payments are paid off, while also generating the most significant waterfront project, other than Rayleigh Field, and maybe CalSTRS, you know, ever in the history of our city, and perhaps the region. So, to me, I think it is the right structure, and it's been, it's been built in a way that was attentive to the city's objectives and our benefit from the beginning, because we drove this project. This was not a project that came to us from Encore, or from Garfield, or from Marriott. This is a project that we, it was our idea, right? So, and the basic structure, the basic outline of no general fund, no meaningful general fund exposure and upside to us, has been in it from the very, the very beginning, and the terms of this basic arrangement, I think, achieved that and reflect that. So, I mean, a lot is still to be done, and, you know, one of the reasons why it was in, yeah, it was in the newspaper, but we haven't done a press conference or a press, we haven't done anything about this, because it's not a project until it's a project, right? Until all the pieces are put into place, you know, we've all, all of us, public and private partners, have been parts of projects that were this far along, and looked this good, and worked this well, and had all the i's dotted and the t's crossed, it didn't happen. So we're not, we're not out promoting this until we have a project, but this is the right, I think we're on the right track towards getting a project that works for us, for the region, and for the private sector partners, so.
Yeah, you know, that's a very helpful distinction. I think, I think you're right. I mean, I think part of, part of the struggle, and I think what Bill probably alluded to without saying it, was that the pro forma that was provided on the ballpark early on didn't require but a fraction of the turnstile attendants that we currently have, so that has been extremely successful. Unfortunately, we've not done anything since then, so the residual effect of that has not materialized in a real way, right? So, had we built hotels and restaurants and shops and different things that keep people there, we would have seen the, you know, the effect of that. Unfortunately, we've not done anything since then, so it really has no more effect than, say, you know, a large Safeway in some respects. And so it has been, so I think to that point, that's a good distinction, it's helpful. So I think we were just trying to think of ways in which to mitigate some of that, but I think on the natural, it will occur, as you said. Yep, thanks.
All right, this is just a workshop, and do you have sufficient direction, Mr. City Manager, to proceed? All right, thank you very much. Thanks to the team members, the partners, and members of the public that participated. All right, council calendar, Ms. Richardson.
Yeah, yes, Mr. Mayor, there's a couple items I wanted to point out on your calendar. One, on Monday, May 25th, LAFCO is going to be holding a protest hearing here in the council meeting, for anybody who wanted to protest the annexation to the Davis Cemetery District. So that'll be here in the council, council chambers that morning. On the 27th, I want to remind the council, we have the police and fire awards ceremony at 5:30 here in the Galleria. And there's a streetcar policy committee meeting on the 29th. On the 5th of April, we have, there's two groundbreakings that are going to be happening in the area, one at 11:00 AM, which is the Bridge Housing Groundbreaking, which they've named that project now Rivermark. At noon in Woodland, the new courthouse is going to be having the groundbreaking also. It's going to be kind of tight to get to both of them, but I just wanted to alert you to that.
I was thinking, I was thinking you guys are going on cap to cap.
And then in April, the only meeting we have is on April 10th, and that is to accommodate the cap to cap schedule. That's all, thank you.
Carol, is cap to cap the 10th?
No, it's the following week, I believe.
Following, okay.
Following week, okay. Okay, any questions on the calendar, otherwise? All right, City Manager, report.
Mr. Mayor, you covered the word of bill earlier. Also, on the federal side, Mike Lugin attended a streetcar conference last week, and again, our project seems to be well-positioned, particularly among projects around the country. One other local issue is the farmer's market kicks off May 23rd. Staff is working with the chamber. Chamber has some proposals to kind of reactivate the farmer's market with food trucks, and possibly a location change in front of City Hall. We're working with the chamber, working with PD on traffic, and we'll come back to you. I just wanted to give you a heads-up that there is a look on how we could make the farmer's market more successful.
Questions on the City Manager report? Staff direction for members of the council? We have no future agenda item requests, or motion to adjourn? We'll move. 移步 by Mr. Kristof, and second by Mr. Viegas. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed during the end? Motion carries, meeting is adjourned.